All right, Mr. Vice Mayor, I believe we are connected. If you would like to call your meeting to order, you may do so at this time.
Thank you, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And this morning, I'm going to ask Mr. Bill Thomas to lead us in the pledge. But before I do so, I think it would be remiss if we didn't mention that this is his last meeting with us as the Assistant City Manager. And so I wish him absolutely the best, and we know that RTC is going to be well-served, as will this community continue to be so. Bill, we wish you Godspeed. Thank you for leading us in the pledge this morning.
Mr. Vice Mayor, our first item today is roll call for the Reno City Council. Breckus?
Here.
Dewar? We're unmuting. I can see—
Here.
There she is. Delgado?
Here.
Weber? I can also see that we have Bonnie on the phone. She is attempting to unmute at this time. Jarden? Reese?
Here.
Chevey? I can also see that we have Mayor on, and she is also working on unmuting. So with that—
I'm here.
There she is. Mr. Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council. Mayor, we can hear you, yes. With that—
Madam Clerk?
Aye, Councilmember Weber, we can hear you now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here.
I'm here.
As you can imagine, Councilmembers, we're having some technical things just to work through, but it looks like we're getting closer, and it looks like we can see some of you in chambers. I don't believe you can see us, but if you have any problems, just notify the clerk that you're having technical difficulties, and we'll try to figure that out on our end.
All right, with that, Mr. Vice Mayor, the first item on your agenda today is public comment. As was noted in the Governor's Order, all public meetings have been reduced in capacity in order to keep our constituents safe. We are not allowing constituents into chambers. Should be noted for the record, there are less than 10 people in this room at this time with staff and council present. Additionally, we did receive online public comment through various formats, through email, voicemail, and our online public format. This information has been disseminated to council and is uploaded for the record. We received 65 general public comments, of which they are non-action items, and do not pertain to any particular item on our agenda today. Those have been submitted to council and are part of the record. This time, I will turn it over to City Manager, as I believe that she has some closing public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just wanted to piggyback on what Councilmember Reese, Vice Mayor Reese, has said earlier today. Today is the last meeting of the Reno City Council for Mr. Bill Thomas, who has served with honor and great skill our good city. So normally, we have a little get-together, and it's traditional to receive a city of Reno street sign at your going-away get-together, but of course, we don't have a get-together in these times. So instead, I have brought your sign. I'm going to place it at a safe distance, and you can come and retrieve it. But I just want to say thank you, Bill, for all of your service, and for your skill and your professionalism in all of these years, and especially your help to me. So, thank you.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I know that you wanted to say a few words as well.
Bill, I can't believe that we're not in chambers with you, and I'm so sorry. This is a very sad day for the city of Reno, but RTC is so lucky to have you. I just want you to know how grateful I am for you so much. You've been tremendous. I couldn't have done so many things, you know, throughout the city without you. So I want you to know how grateful I am, and I love you to pieces, and just, you know, go over there and just be the rock star you are. But we're going to miss you. So thank you for everything. You're amazing.
Mr. Thomas, did you want to say a few words?
For the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager, for two more days. First, Mayor, I think you'd be proud of me, I'm wearing my mask. But you can't tell if I'm smiling or frowning, so I'll leave it to your imagination. I don't want to—I know this is a challenge technologically to meet this way. It certainly will be a memorable meeting, for me as it is for everybody. I did want to thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, for the opportunities that you've afforded me to help the citizens of Reno. I really, really enjoy my job, and in spite of the challenges that all of you face, I was very proud of having the chance to work with you to do the great work that we do for the citizens of Reno. And I also wanted to take the moment to thank Sabre. She's—in the relatively short period we've worked together, she's taught me a lot, and I've learned a lot from her. And I did want to say—which I know all of you know—you have some great employees at the city of Reno, and the leaders that you have in this organization and the people you have working for you have the best interests of the public in mind in the way they do their business. And it's never been difficult, and I doubt it ever will be, to get them to put their best effort forward. So I want to thank all the city employees I've worked with. And I'm really excited about my opportunity to come back in a couple of months. For the—council asked me a lot of questions about RTC, so thank you, everybody.
And Bill, I'm sure you know that when we get on the other side of all of this and can spend more time with one another, we'll toast a few in your honor with you appropriately.
All right, with that, Mr. Vice Mayor, your next item is approval of the agenda, in which I will send to the manager for any updates or changes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do have a number of changes. First of all, I have B11, the NV Energy Audit, to delete from this agenda. We have had some further discussions with NV Energy, and we'll bring that back with more detail on repayment and those plans. Also, D3, deleting the Downtown Events Center discussion with RCDAs. D6, the emergency manager as critical labor shortage. Our emergency manager has decided to not retire, so we do not need this item. D11, actions taken per Section 8 of the Reno Municipal Code under the emergency. We do not have any actions since our last meeting to report on, so we can delete that. And then I just want to remind the mayor and council that we do have an attorney-client meeting today as well. So just to go down that list again, for everyone's E's, B as in boy, 11; D as in dog, 3; D as in dog, 6; and D as in dog, 11. I have no further changes.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
No, could we have discussion on what the manager's brought forward to us?
I need a motion first. We'll have a motion, and then we'll have conversation about that. Can I get a motion, please?
I'm moved to approve all but—keep the—I want to keep D11 on the agenda.
I have a motion. I don't know that I've had a second.
Could we hear why? This is Naomi Dewar.
Councilmember Dewar, is that a second?
Okay, I'll second it for discussion. I'd like to know why.
Second, Councilmember Breckus.
Yeah, I mean, the manager said that no actions have been taken since the last meeting under the Section 8, but I think it would be helpful for us to hear what actions we have taken, to hear a little bit about that and discuss those. I'm getting a lot of input from business owners and operators, and just the general public on, you know, the city's response, how that relates, pertains to, you know, other orders. And to me, it's the matter of the day, and I just like, you know, a little bit, so we're all on the same base knowledge, and it's been presented out there to the world. I don't see the harm on going through with this item.
So I have a question. This is Naomi Dewar.
Councilmember Dewar?
Yes, I just wondered—so, D11 is styled for a number of actions. I mean, I would not be opposed to just getting an update if we're allowed to under this item, but I think our manager's saying that she's not ready to move forward with any actions. So perhaps we could get some clarification on that.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may, this is Sabre Newby speaking. D11 is a report that is required in your Reno Municipal Code, and I believe NRS as well. So pursuant to the mayor's declaration of emergency, this item is to report back on any official emergency actions, say, further closure action or other things taken. The reason that I had put it forward to be taken off is because the city has not taken further action to—any emergency action for further closures or those items under Section 8 of your Reno Municipal Code, the emergency declaration section. So that's really what this—what this particular item is concerning.
All right, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dewar.
If I may ask our manager—all right, thank you. If I may ask our manager, is there another part of the agenda where you could just give us an update on actions, maybe a different agenda item where you give us a report? Perhaps there's a manager's report here somewhere.
I don't believe—again, this is Sabre Newby—I don't believe that there is, and I would prefer, perhaps, to speak with you online to see what it is that you would like in such a report, and then maybe we can agendize it.
May I ask a question on this?
Councilmember Breckus.
Now, this is Section 8, but it's really Title 8? Not—Section 8, it's Title 8, is it—within Title 8, what section is this? Of the emergency powers, and this requiring of a report? I didn't see that in the staff report. And then I—I know that the last time we convened was two weeks ago, and there was discussion, and I thought it was left as a, you know, not firmed up whether or not the mayor did sign that declaration. So it seemed to me, if we got to this item, you could tell us the mayor did sign the declaration or not. I'm a little concerned that we're just not in a public forum going to be kind of continuing the conversation. And so two questions to our manager, really, you know, to help us understand the statute we're under—we're operating under. And then two, you know, continuing the conversation. I mean, obviously, we're approval of the agenda, and I think it would be very remiss to say, oh, we're not going to talk about that and move on, when there's questions of the body on the important matter of the day.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may, Sabre Newby speaking again. We can just go ahead and leave it on, and we can have certainly city attorneys, office, and others report on the legal background for this particular item. I'm fine with that.
Awesome, thank you, Councilmember Breckus. I believe you have a motion, it's been seconded by Councilmember Dewar. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Vice Mayor, next item is approval of the minutes of February 12. I would like to note for the record that there is an update and a correction to a vote, item I2, and those minutes have been uploaded and corrected.
Okay, with that correction in mind, may I please have a motion?
I have a question. Was that the change that I brought to your attention, Ashley?
No, this was a change brought forward by Councilmember Weber.
Which was the vote? What chapter was that in?
It was on—I too, it was the Verdi Boat Case.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
What was the vote?
Councilmember Breckus, if you are unable to approve the agenda or the meeting minutes as identified, just let us know that by your vote.
Mr. Reese, is it your MO as the Presiding Officer, do not allow discussions, and then just want to go right into votes?
Councilmember Breckus, please refrain from addressing me in that manner. I'm not trying to start an argument with you. The issue is, is that we have a considerable amount of work to do today, and if you want to monopolize the time that we have together, we're not all going to be able to have the opportunity to say our piece. So you spending five minutes on an item that has little or no consequence, such as the routine approval of past meeting minutes, is just not necessary. You have the opportunity to read them. If you don't believe that they're accurate or reflect your vote as you took them, simply so indicate. Our clerk will make changes to those. It is a pro forma action.
You know, I think you're lecturing me, and I just want to say that I asked last time—
Councilmember Breckus, please listen to what I've said. Thank you. We're moving on. May I have a motion, please?
Moved approved.
Do I have a motion by Councilmember Jarden? Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Naomi Dewar.
A second by Councilmember Dewar. Any further discussion on this item at this time? Okay, seeing none, I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, next item is your consent agenda. It'd be noted for the record that we did receive comments on item B10. One was received in concern—excuse me, two were received in concern, one from Don Tetro and one from John Kompadik. Additionally, there was online public comment from Trey Abney concerned with this item. With that, Mr. Vice Mayor, I have no further public comment, and I'll turn it back to you for items to be pulled for discussion by councilmembers.
Okay, let me start with Ward 1. Councilmember Breckus, do you have any items that you'd like pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. I would like B4, B5—no, excuse me, B4, B6, B8, B10.
Okay, I think that's all the ones on the consent agenda. Do you want to take a look and swing back if you find a different one? Councilmember Dewar, do you have any items that you'd like pulled from the consent agenda?
No, thank you.
Okay, Ward 3, Councilmember Delgado?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonnie Weber, Ward 4.
I do not have any items.
Thank you, and Councilmember Jarden?
Already pulled.
Okay. Madam Mayor?
No, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, and I have nothing. So with that in mind, given those items—and let me just confirm with our clerk—B4, 6, 8, and 10 have been pulled at the request of Councilmember Breckus. May I have a motion on the consent agenda items not pulled for discussion?
Motion.
No move.
Do I have a motion and a second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion carries unanimously.
First item, item B4, pulled by Councilmember Breckus.
Councilmember Breckus, B4.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I can actually discuss B4, B6, and B8 in the same context, and that is the context of our adopted capital improvement plan. And I think that the capital improvement plan had a budget of $8 million for the collection system, and I had asked that to be uploaded—I think it was page 49 of our adopted Community Capital Improvement Plan. And I was—because it seems like we're triggering over what we budgeted this year for collection, and a lot of that is concentrated in one area. And so did—Mr. Attorney, were you able to upload that? I didn't see that uploaded for these items. Were you able to upload the item I asked into the record?
Yes, Councilmember Breckus. We are pulling that up right now for chambers. That information will be uploaded to the record within 24 hours after we've adjourned, as it's being presented during the meeting.
Okay, yeah, that's why I sent it in advance, so, you know, when I review it, I could see it. But on page 49, the sewer one, I'm just looking for the breakdown year-to-date. And I'll be honest, the numbers for a lot of the work up in the North Valleys are—seem to be exceeded our budgetary numbers. At the same time, another CIP item, which I've long been advocating, and that is to take care of the needs of older neighborhoods and put those on a par, has really dropped off and not progressed at all. And so I was wondering if we could hear from that, where we're at, how much we're spending in the collection system. I mean, obviously, we're at the year-end close. So is someone around to answer that question?
Councilmember Breckus, hold on one second, because I think we're trying to figure out who might need to be here. I'm going to ask Mr. Thomas to step to the podium and address the question. And just so that we're clear, are you speaking specifically with this thing that I see on my screen in chambers about B4? B4, boy, four?
Well, as I mentioned when I started this discussion, I—this question was really about the three that I pulled. This is a $4.5 million contract for the Golden Valley Lift Station replacement project, so that's $4.5 million. And then B6 is about $2.8 million for a dam. And then we have—the other one was the Forest Main of $3.3 million. So we're looking about, I don't know, $7.5, $8 million of sewer work up in just a very, you know, just up in that area. And I was wondering how that comports and pertains to the running balance of what we budgeted last year on—it was page 79 of that document. Not—not—or 49, not the smaller one, the one that was on. Could you scroll down a few pages, Mr. Attorney, on that?
And Councilmember Breckus, I'm just asking clarity for the record. I just am trying to figure out, to make sure that we are addressing each one that needs to be. I get that you see them as related. I'm just trying to make sure that we have staff here who can answer the questions. And so I'm going to let our Assistant City Manager speak for a moment and see if that can answer some of the questions. And if not, what we'll do is we'll try to get someone here to chambers who can answer it a little bit later, and we can just table these items and come back to it.
Yeah, she had it on page 49, and it's really—you know, that's—this is what we adopted. We adopted $8 million, and I'm wondering how much we've spent so far, and how much are these projects get us to?
Mr. Flansburgh is on his way down.
Okay, and it sounds like Mr. Flansburgh is heading to chambers, but Mr. Thomas, did you want to add anything before he gets here?
For the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. Thank you, Vice Mayor. John is on his way to give you the details. These projects would not have come forward if the funding wasn't available. I would say that at least two of these are very critical timing-wise, because NDOT is about to start a project where they're going to do major changes to the Par Boulevard Bridge. And so the timing of these two sewer projects is critical as far as moving forward now. So I see both John and Carrier here, and they can certainly add more detail.
Mr. Flansburgh, did you hear the questions from Ms. Breckus?
I did hear some of them. I was trying to connect on Zoom, but we'll make this work. Councilmember Breckus—are—for the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. Councilmember Breckus, you had asked the question in regards to CIP. You had referred to page 49, which is our Collection System Capital Projects. In addition to that, we have our—on page 52, we have our annual lift station rehabilitation portion of projects. That was at $20,497. So the combination of those two items is the 28—28.5 million for the most part. Current to date, we have encumbered a total of about $10 million. And then, obviously, with these awards today, that would end up leaving us between those two items of the collection system and the lift station maintenance items, about $6.35 million remaining.
For this year's CIP?
In this year's CIP.
Okay. So if we go back to page 49, then, the project that I've been advocating for eight years now of extending sewer into Island 18, where we don't have sewer, can that be done this time? It seems to me for geographic parity among growth areas and older areas, that the council, you know, probably wants to start thinking about tending to older neighborhoods, because, you know, we're just responding in these growth areas, and the older neighborhoods are getting left behind. These in Island 18 don't have any sewer, and the septic's are failing, and they're causing water quality degradation, you know, that's been documented. So can that—$6.5 million, we'll be bringing that for the first phase of Island 18?
We are not—we do not have that planned at this time, because we are waiting for combining those—the work that would happen in Island 18 with a street reconstruction, where it would be more conducive to go in and do a infrastructure refresh in those areas. And then, of course, we'd be looking at setting up an SAD, which we've had some discussions with some of the property owners up there in regard to setting up that SAD to expand the sewer into the area as well. But it's—as you can tell, we've asterisked that on page 49, depending on funding for street reconstruction, sidewalk, and storm drain concurrently.
Yeah, I'm—you know, I'm just seeing if we keep spending and spending and taking on debt for the sewer system. And I wanted to use this as an opportunity to call this out to the council, that I don't think the street reconstructions should wait, and I don't think these property owners should be subject to SAD. You know, we're responding so much to the growth out there, and they're getting treated ahead and queuing above older areas that are causing environmental degradation and are long-term property owners. So I just want to call this up, that we have $6 million to spend this year, and again, older parts of our neighborhoods are getting skipped over. And the dam project, wasn't even on any of the CIP as I saw.
Yes, and thank you for that. On page 51, for Storm Drain Capital Projects, it was not listed under project descriptions. That is because we are not anticipating—we would not have expenditure of any funds in the current fiscal year. And in fact, based on the agenda item, as you can see, the—all of the design is 100% funded through the grant funds. The construction is not anticipated to happen until fiscal year '24, so calendar year '23, 2023, 2024. And at that time, a 35% match would be required, and we would list that capital, and that project would be listed at that time with those expenditures.
But where are we at on setting up the storm drainage fund? The storm drainage rate payers can pay for that and not sewer customers, who are, you know, having escalated costs at the rate.
Sure, thank you for that question, Councilmember. The—as you're aware, we charge—in the sewer fund, we also charge for stormwater projects. It's a fairly minimal funding. As we looked at the stormwater utility, we would look at a probably $3.50 to possibly $4 a month reduction in the sewer fee for the effort that we have today. And when we bring forward the stormwater utility, which I know we were looking forward to having a workshop with council this month, and obviously, we're in different times than we were when we decided to do that, but at that time, we would look at having a slight reduction in the sewer fund, but we'd be looking at how we would fund that through the stormwater utility, and then the different various methods of doing that. And look forward to have that conversation in a workshop with council in the future. to have that conversation in a workshop with council in the future.
Do any other council members have any questions on these items? And I apologize, and I'll look to City Attorney Carl Hall about the sort of combining them. Will we need to pull them out individually as we vote for the record? Do them combined? Okay. Do any other council members have questions on items B4, B6, and B8 at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to come back to you, Councilmember Brekis. Do you have a motion, or are you wishing to defer?
I'll make a motion, but I just want to register my concern that it seems like the administrative side of the House, through the CIP implementation that we budget each year, is jumping growth areas ahead of older established neighborhoods. And I'm just, year after year, I'm just saying. I'm sorry, who cut me off? I didn't hear, I didn't hear who cut me off there. What was that? What was?
I think we're just having a little technical difficulty. Councilmember Brekis, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. So, with that, I do motion.
Okay, so I have a motion from Councilmember Brekis and a second from Councilmember Weber. All those in favor of items B4, 6, and 8, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Each of the items carries unanimously.
Next item, item B10 is pulled, excuse me, yes, B10 is pulled by Councilmember Brekis. Third quarter augmentation.
Okay, Councilmember Brekis, item B10.
Okay.
And Ms. Lochner is with us in chambers, too.
Okay, that's great. I can't see, it seems like last time I could see who was up at the dais, but I can't this Did we change the cost allocations to the, to the two building funds and the sewer fund? Did we take other action at one point to change what we had as previously adopted cost allocations, or did this come out of the audit?
So, this is, this is Deborah Lochner, for the record, Finance Director. In 2002, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board put out a pronouncement that told us that we needed to do a full accrual method of accounting in our funds, right? So, the, what happens is the Internal Service Funds are, operationally cannot generate a profit, and if they generate a profit or a loss, that needs to get spread amongst all the other funds that they provide a service to. And so, this is really spreading those net profits or net losses amongst all the different funds that, you know, the enterprise funds and the internal service funds. So, what, and it's been accruing since 2002. So, that's basically what has happened. We do the calculations every year, but for a variety of reasons, we didn't actually do the journal entries to move the cash. So, now, you know, we found this issue. We've been carrying it for a decade, or two decades, and we are looking to clear that up and not have to continue to manage this with spreadsheets and liability that goes into the financial statements. It is a cleanup accounting entry. We put it in the augmentation because we felt that it was important to, while we've discussed it with the fund managers, we also felt it was important for the council to understand that this is money, that it's not found money, it's money that's been sitting on the books for many years, and we're trying to clean it up. And so, you know, it typically would be done with a year-end audit entry, but being that it is so many years, we wanted to bring it forward as part of an augmentation.
Okay, I guess that's fine. I just, you know, if it's been around since 2002, since some of us who came on in 2012, you know, we did so much fiscal kind of cleanup and policies, and I was just surprised that we didn't clean it up in those years, but I'll accept that. The next question is on the workman's comp. We had settlements of about $2.3 million. Was that just one, or did we have a? That's something that's been attention to me, is how is the workman's comp, you know, that's why I advocated for a risk manager position. Was that a bunch of settlements, or just one big one?
I think, I mean, that came forward to council. I believe it was one big settlement on the workers' comp that's been many years in the coming, but I can look into it further. We just, we get the money, and we say, we want to, we want to put the money where it belongs.
Okay, and then, why is the medical fund reimbursing sewer and building? Is that that same in reverse of the other way?
It is. It's the same of the Internal Service Funds and spreading the money where it needs to go.
Okay, okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Okay, let me see if anybody else has questions on item B10 at this time. Okay, I want to say a couple of things on B10. Certainly, what I think is important here is that, Ms. Lochner, I think your team is doing an excellent job of making sure that we are, you know, abiding by general accounting principles. It was, you know, unusual, I suppose, to see something that went back to 2002, to now be able to be in a position to account for it correctly. I ultimately understand the process by which you've gone through, but I want to make sure that my colleagues and the public understand fundamentally the nature of it. I don't want people to misunderstand or believe it's, you know, somehow found money, or it's an accounting error that we're only just now catching after so many years. But I do think it's true that over time, accountancy standards change, and at the end of the day, with regard to the funds that have been identified, those will go into our general fund, and I make the assumption as we roll into difficult financial decisions that having this here at the front helps us to understand what other choices we may make later. And so, I appreciate the work that's gone into this. I know I did hear from some members of the, one of the Building Enterprise Fund Committees, and just a general concern was raised that, you know, they were worried that, you know, one, how could it be found after so many years, which makes sense as you explained it, and I think they understood that. And then, two, that, you know, everyone's always waiting for the other shoe to drop, like, where is some other thing going to happen? And all I could say to that, and what I would say to my colleagues, is simply that, you know, I trust the, you know, accounting that you're doing for the city, and I understand the reasons why all this has gone into it. And, you know, budget augmentations, of course, happen for different reasons, and so I thank you for sort of pausing on this moment to give us an explanation of it. I hope that as we move forward, you know, we'll have more budget augmentations because essentially, those are ultimately good things. How they've come to be, you know, is just, we want to make sure we're very transparent with the public about where the funds came from, and being able to trace them is very important to the overall greater issue of transparency. So, I thank you for that. In the absence of anybody else having any questions, I'm going to come back to you, Councilmember Brekis, for a motion.
I'll move.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Brekis.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Jarden. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Vice Mayor, our next item is item C1. This is a public hearing for the 2019 Special Assessment District Number One.
Okay, and so I'm going to start by opening the hearing. This is the time and place fixed for a hearing of protest and objections to the assessment role, the regularity, validity, and correctness of these assessments, the amount of each assessment, and the regularity of proceedings with respect to the 2019 Special Assessment District Number One. I now declare these public hearings open. Has the City of Reno received any applications for hardship?
Kerikowski, City Engineer, none were received.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, do you have any affidavits showing that the hearing was properly noticed?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I do have affidavits of publication, mailing, and posting, and notices of hearing that were properly noticed.
Okay, with that in mind, Madam Secretary, please file the affidavits.
May I read a disclosure?
Hold on a second, I'm almost there. Madam Secretary, please file the affidavits. And then, do any of the council members have anything to disclose?
Madam Mayor, or excuse me, Mr. Presiding Officer, I need to disclose the fact that my husband and I live at 725 Gordon Avenue. The properties within this project area for the City of Reno, Nevada, 2019 Special Assessment District Number One. On this matter, I've sought guidance from the City Attorney's Office pursuant to NRS 281A 420 Sub 4A. The law presumes that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in the public officer's situation would not be materially affected by the public officer's significant pecuniary interest where the resulting benefit or detriment accruing to the public officer is not greater than that accruing to any other member of any general business, profession, occupation, or group that is affected by the matter. Here, while I have a significant pecuniary interest in my residence, resulting benefit or detriment accruing to me and my family will not be greater than that accruing to any member of the general public that owns property in the project area. See in the matter of Weber, Commission Opinion Number 09-47C 2009, mere ownership of property not sufficient to implicate disclosure requirements. The fact that I own property in the project area will not impact my ability to impartially review and render a decision upon this particular agenda item. In light of the foregoing, the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by my pecuniary interests, and because this is not a clear case of disqualifying conflict of interest, I will be voting on this matter. Madam Clerk, please accept this disclosure and lodge it on the record for this meeting and subsequent meetings pertaining to this agenda item.
Thank you, Councilmember Brekis. Do any of the other council members have any disclosures at this time? Okay, I will now call upon the designated of the City Engineer for a description of the completed work and improvements, the extent of the district, the cost and expense of the project, and the amount of the assessments. Ms. Kerikowski.
Thank you. Kerikowski, City Engineer. The 2019 Special Assessment District is a joint effort between the property owners and the city to replace damaged, deteriorated, or missing sidewalk sections within the proposed district. The district is comprised of one city street project and three RTC street projects. The SAD work was performed at the same time as the street rehabilitation projects. The cost of the sidewalk replacing, meeting, replacement, meeting the certain criteria, was defrayed by the city back to the property owners in the form of an assessment. The district is comprised of 182 properties with a final total assessment of $490,315.42. Final assessment amounts are based on the bid prices or the maximum amount that the city can assess. The method used in determining the amount of individual benefit and cost to each property owner has been established using a front-foot basis as outlined in NRS 271. This is the same methodology that the city has used for many years with the sidewalk SAD improvement projects.
This time, I would like to note in the record that we received one letter of written protest from Deborah Campbell at 831 Gordon Avenue. At this time, Mr. Vice Mayor, it should be noted that there is no public comment present. We did receive one online public comment in general opposition to SADs. With that, we will now transition to call upon the Assessment District Coordinator to respond to any written or oral protest.
The notice to the property owners was listed the criteria for protesting and objecting the Assessment District. They were the assessment role, the regularity, validity, correctness of each assessment, the amount of each assessment, or the regularity, validity, and correctness of any other proceedings occurring after the date of this hearing described. There were no protest or objection letters received that follow the criteria that I just mentioned above. However, there were requests to re-propone, postpone assessments and other items, which I'm going to now denote for the record. Ms. Campbell at 832 Gordon Avenue requested to remove herself from the Special Assessment District or postpone until after the COVID-19 crisis. This request did not meet the criteria for a protest listed, that I've previously listed. At 1692 Sierra Highlands Drive, the property frontage was adjusted and matched the estimated property boundary. The assessment was reduced from 16 square feet of sidewalk to 10.7 square feet of sidewalk, and the final assessment role reflects this request. We received a question from 942 Ralston Avenue. The property was incorrectly assessed because the property owner had the sidewalk replacement done by another contractor. They provided the documentation to support this claim. The assessment was removed from this parcel, and the final assessment roles reflect this request. At 0 Sutro Avenue, which is an undeveloped lot, the property owner was asked for an easement, which was needed to add sidewalk. So, this property was removed from the Assessment District, and the final assessment reflects this request. Finally, at 589 Reno Avenue, the property owner, excuse me, the property was sold, and the role was updated with the new ownership information, and the final assessment role reflects this request.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Koski. I will now ask the council members if there are any questions or comments at this time.
I have a question. I did not see that public input on the general opposition to assessments. Was that the one in the emails that came right before the meeting from Barbara Thoreau?
This was a public comment from Lorna Hoff that was sent via the emails to council in the packet for general public comment.
Okay, I didn't see that one. But it was, it was about, these ones or the BID?
This was just, in general, she does not believe that council is allowed to assess taxes without a public vote. It doesn't pertain to this particular SAD or the bid or any other. However, we assigned it because she did use the word "assessment."
Okay, I appreciate that. You know, in terms of the, and Ms. Koski, I think you said the protestant, Ms. Campbell's 832 Gordon Avenue, I think when I looked at the record, she said it was 831. So, I just wanted to state that. I'm a little sympathetic to her claims at this point and how to juggle those out. We're making, later on, we have some precautions for people who are, owe city the money, owe money to the city for, you know, the privilege of operating businesses. And I think, under the circumstance, hardships express on an assessment here, I don't know that, I want to set precedent on that, but what are the criteria? How can she not be included in a hard, isn't there a hardship criteria that we have under the state law, Ms. Koski? She is expressing hardship.
Correct. Kerikowski, City Engineer, and you are correct. The address was 831. I misspoke. And the hardship requires that, we do have a form that the property owners need to fill out, and they have to also submit verification of their tax rolls and such, and that was not performed. In addition, that particular, that particular person did not meet the criteria, as I described earlier, for protesting the assessment.
Well, I mean, I don't know, you know, she's, she's stating in her letter that she's been unemployed or unable to take income since March 18th. She wrote this on March 25th. I mean, can we pardon someone for seven days of not filling out the proper form? I feel that I can.
And that's certainly the council's prerogative.
So, can I make a motion to move forward with that?
Okay, I have a motion by Madam Mayor and a second.
Yeah, I think to clarify, as I understand the motion, is to move forward with the SAD, but with the ability of her to fill out, you know, the hardship form. Can we mechanically do that at this time?
I don't believe that was the motion. I'll go back to the motion maker. Madam Mayor, your motion was to adopt the resolution, am I correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I want to make sure that she can qualify for the hardship.
Ms. Koski, did you have some comment to add? It's hard to see in the chambers because we all have masks on, so I apologize for a little clunkiness up here from So I apologize for a little clunkiness up here from the dais. Ms. Kowski.
We can certainly provide her with the letter, the form, and if she provides all of the documentation, then we could, that conforms, we, we could consider that, yes.
Madam Mayor, does that satisfy your inquiry?
Sounds good.
Okay, I, I believe we had a motion and a second. I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. I'll now turn it over to our city attorney to read the ordinance.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. This is ordinance introduction, Bill Number 7136. Ordinance confirming the proceedings taken and providing for certain sidewalk driveway approach and street improvements in the city of Reno, Nevada, 2019. Special Assessment District Number One, providing for the payment of the cost and expenses of said improvements, providing for assessing the cost of said improvements against the parcels of land benefited by said improvements, describing the manner for the collection and payment of said assessments, and providing penalties for the delinquent payments, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Okay, may I have a motion to refer?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jordan. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second by.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Naomi Dewer.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Dewer. It's easier if you let me know who you are. I think I know your voices, but I'm trying the best. Hey, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now I'll call for a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved, Councilwoman Jordan.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Jordan.
Second, Dewer.
A second by Councilmember Dewer. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, we are on Item D1. This is a resolution for the Reno City Council for extension of the current moratorium for alcoholic beverage packaged privileged business licenses.
Okay, thank you. Does the council desire a staff presentation at this time?
You know, I would, I, I would, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Breckus. I'm going to ask Mr. Stockham to come forward. Let me also ask while he's coming forward, Madam Clerk, did we receive public comment on this item at all?
We have none, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll start with the presentation. Mr. Stockham, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, good morning, council members. Arlo Stockham, Community Development Director. This agenda item is to extend the existing moratorium through the end of 2020. We were in the process of, of developing ordinances and had done community outreach, and were essentially ready to move towards the public hearing process when the coronavirus hit. Given our inability to host meetings and work in person with people, and also the business closures associated with the coronavirus, our recommendation is essentially that this be held in abeyance until the end of the state of emergency and then be taken up at that time. If there is an interest in either sunsetting or reducing the scope of the moratorium, we could do that. But again, our recommendation is a simple extension through the end of December 2020. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Breckus, did you have questions for Mr. Stockham?
No, but since you've called on me, I'll, I'll state that I was not in favor of this moratorium, as the record shows when the first resolution passed. I thought that it was onerous to our industry. While I'm supportive of doing some refinement through the zoning code, and I'd hope that it would be a priority item, I didn't feel that it was right to take this step. And I, I think that my concern is even greater at this point in time, because when we do open up, I think there'll be a lot of change out and turnover of who's going to go in business, who's not going to go in business. And I think this will be an encumbrance to that, and we might even see, you know, taking up a lot of administrative time trying to, to work through that. And so, you know, I'm just being consistent here. I did support a moratorium last year. I'm not going to support another one. I, I want to see, you know, our new regulations come forward, but I didn't feel that operating in a moratorium was the right approach, and I, I still don't.
Thank you, Councilmember Breckus. Is there any other questions or discussions from council members? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, please.
So moved, Dewer.
I have a motion by Councilmember Dewer. Do I have a second?
Second, Weber.
Second by Councilmember Weber. Any further discussions on this item at this time? Okay, seeing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please signify by saying no.
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries six to one.
Mr. Vice Mayor, next item, D2, a resolution of the council to extend a current moratorium for business license applicants for the retail sale of dogs or cats.
And does the council desire a staff presentation on this item?
I would like to know what the status is on this, and, um, so that would be helpful.
Okay, let me call Mr. Stockham back to the podium, but before I do that, Madam Clerk, were there any public comments submitted on this item specifically?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we have none.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stockham, welcome back.
Good morning, Arlo Stockham, Community Development Director. Much like the prior agenda item, we essentially had this ready to move to the public hearing process when the coronavirus and state of emergency hit, and we needed, well, we couldn't have those meetings. We're recommending a shorter extension, six months on this one. It's a more straightforward amendment, and we anticipate being able to move forward quite soon. We have done the outreach to the public and assembled some inputs, so we think we can get this approved pretty quickly.
So moved, Dewer.
Could I have a question on that report?
Hold on one second, Councilmember Breckus. I have a motion. Let me see if I have a second. Motion by Councilmember Dewer.
Weber, second.
A second by Councilmember Weber. And now for further discussion, Councilmember Breckus, I'll come to you.
Was there a meeting recently that Washoe County held that maybe they would be making our action moot under the animal control powers that they have?
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I can respond.
Councilmember Dewer, I think you're the liaison to the Animal Advisory Committee.
Correct. It's the Washoe County Animal Advisory Committee. For those, we have representation from Reno, Sparks, Washoe County, and the general public. There are seven board members. We held a special meeting on this topic for the Animal Advisory Board, and the focus of that was to encourage the cities of Sparks and Washoe County to follow suit with the city of Reno's previous actions, to initiate both a moratorium to study the issue and then move forward with a regulation or ordinance that would prohibit these. That motion passed at the Advisory Board 6-1, and the Washoe County staff have prepared letters for my signature. I have not sent those letters because I haven't come in contact with the Washoe County staff, but they are in my inbox, ready for signature. We may do that electronically. But anyway, that's where it stands. It wasn't aimed at us. It was aimed at, although I will mention, there was a difference between the one that our council moved forward with and the one that the Animal Advisory Board moved forward with. They, ours focused on dogs and cats. Theirs included ferrets and rabbits, which are often kept as pets as well. So they are recommending not allowing sale, retail sale of ferrets and rabbits. And so that would inform our ultimate decision here at City Council, and since we haven't taken action yet, we'll receive that letter from Animal Advisory Board, and that'll get sent to our manager, and our staff may want to incorporate that, or at least provide an alternative for council to consider when they bring that back. Thank you.
Okay, any further comments or discussions by council? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please signify by saying no. Okay, the motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Item D3 has been withdrawn from our agenda. Therefore, we are on Item D4, Discussion and Potential Direction Regarding Disposition of City-Owned Property at 310 Fensi Street.
Okay, Madam Clerk, may I first ask, did we have public comment on this particular item?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we have none.
Okay, and does council desire a staff presentation? Okay, it sounds like we don't have any desire for a staff presentation, so I'll simply ask for a motion. Councilmember Jordan, are you prepared to move?
Moved to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Jordan. Do I have a second? Councilmember Weber is seconded.
Weber, second.
Okay, any further discussion on this item at this time? Okay, seeing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Item D5, Resolution of the Reno City Council for objections and assessment of the Neighborhood Improvement Project, otherwise known as the Downtown Reno Business Improvement District.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, was there public comment registered for this item?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we received public comment on this item from Jeff Church in opposition. That information has been sent to council and is lodged in the record.
Okay, and I, I reviewed Mr. Church's email. Okay, does council desire a staff presentation at this time?
I just have a question for our attorney. Is, are, is this subject to a lawsuit at this point, the, the entire bid process? And are we under any injunctions or anything?
No, there's no injunction. There is a pending case. We had a favorable ruling from the district court, but this particular item just sets another date for the assessment role, so there's really not any implementation of this project. So it's already been approved. So no, there's, there's no prohibition based upon pending cases in district court.
And then the other question is more of a, maybe the manager can answer, or, is, these are subject to property tax values, and then you, you calculate off of that? And I'm just wondering if there's an anticipation of a, of a reduction on, on this, you know, as related to property tax, you know, as related to the projections of the economic conditions of the COVID emergency? And then a follow-up to that is, I've seen some of the reports that some of the work being done is, is COVID-related. Is there an opportunity to be able to get some emergency reimbursement for the work that they're doing?
For the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager, I think I probably best suited to answer those questions. So as the council may remember, this is an annual process that is necessary by state statute as far as the steps to allow this business improvement district. I do know in conversations with the members of the bid, they're very much aware of the sensitivity to the values of property and how that works backwards into the levy and the assessment and the actual money they have to be able to do their service. But I think, much like us, all of us can only proceed in the world as we know it exists today. Certainly, if the property values change after the council moves forward on this, the levy will be set. There'll just be less money generated because the values will go down. And then that will probably cause some conversation that eventually will come back to the council as the body that sets the levy rate. So I don't think anybody has a good answer about how this is going to affect it, but we're, they're aware and we're aware. In terms of the costs, because the ambassadors are doing, in fact, an amazing job in helping the city of Reno and our regional partners managing particularly the situation at the RDC, as well as taking the responsibility of managing some of the, the restroom facilities as well as distributing water, they've been advised, and I personally have given them the information, I've seen them come through in terms of ability to apply for federal funding because of the efforts they're doing for COVID-19. So they're aware, they have that information, and based on my conversation with them, they will be following that up in terms of their ability to get reimbursed for their COVID-related activities.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Vice Mayor Reese, may I speak?
Councilmember Dewer.
Jordan.
Jordan, sorry.
Sorry. I did want to just relate to the council that the subject and the sensitivities of these assessments is top of mind for all of the members of the Downtown Reno Partnership. But we at the Downtown Reno Partnership, just like we at the city, and as you stated, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager, Bill Thomas stated that, you know, we're kind of moving on the information that we have at hand, but are certainly very sensitive and will be, you know, relooking at things as, as we move forward.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Jordan. Can I have a motion, please?
Moved to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Jordan and a second by Councilmember Dewer. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please signify by saying no. Motion carries unanimously.
Vice Mayor, Item D6 has been withdrawn from the agenda, moving to Item D7, Presentation and Discussion for the Process to Appoint a City Manager.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on this item at this time?
We have none, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to turn this over to our city manager then for, or it looks like Mr. Shaver's coming forward to the podium. No?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Shaver has a short PowerPoint with a couple of different options.
Outstanding. Thank you, Mr. Shaver.
Thank you so much for the opportunity for this unique meeting today. I am here dutifully wearing my face mask to overview for the council the search schedule for the replacement of my boss and our friend, Sabra Muni, the city manager. I wanted to give you a quick overview. Article 3, Section 3.030 of your charter requires any vacancy in the city manager's office to be filled not later than six months after the vacancy occurs. We've talked to our friends in the city attorney's office about the definition of the term vacancy, and we are going to go with the textbook definition here. The, the city manager is still here. The vacancy does not exist until such time as she is gone. You have previously retained a recruiter. They're indicating that they can go through a full recruitment in as few as 12 weeks. Now, that's an expedited schedule. We would not recommend going any shorter than that. And then the, the precision of that schedule really depends on how this body would like to proceed moving forward in terms of timeline. At your last meeting, you presented a series of concerns about your ability to recruit a city manager in the current climate. Certainly, the lack to, lack of ability to conduct a face-to-face meeting or a town hall or anything like that might, might impact what you are able to attract here. CPS has laid out a work plan. They've developed, and they will develop their candidate profile, and they'll conduct a robust recruitment. But again, they're sort of a trigger that this council would need to pull to get that rolling sooner rather than later. And I wanted to put that into context for you in terms of a timeline, and I just assume everybody can see this on their screens. So we are today at April 8th. If the city manager stays here until her announced departure date on May 29th, that's, that starts your six-month clock ticking and gives you until November 29th to find a replacement. Now, between now and May 29th, there's obviously a lot of things happening, right? So the IHME projections, which are sort of the ones that are most referenced in the, in the media, would suggest that peak resource use due to the current condition, and this is today's prediction, this, this projection changes every day, might occur around the 17th of April. The governor's current closure order, which he has already extended out two weeks beyond its original timeframe, is due to lapse on April 30th, which its original timeframe, is due to lapse on April 30, which would, if you were to start a recruitment process, even then, even on the day after the peak, you would not have 12 weeks before Sabra's departure to conduct the full recruitment. My suspicion, however, is that this body would not start on the day after the peak, rather start on a time, maybe several weeks after, when we are relatively assured that normal business can continue, which might occur several weeks or even months after that. I'm by no means an epidemiologist, I read the same media you do, I'm on the same briefing calls with the health district that you are, and so, we're not using these as predictions, we're just sort of laying out potential scenarios. There's one, the U.S. Intervention Model says that Washoe County peaks on June 17. So, you know, there's a lot of sort of different targets for this. I think that was the source of your uncertainty at your last discussion about this. Of course, COVID-19 is not the only thing happening in the world, right? Our budget, unfortunately, we have struck out with the state authorities on this, the city's budget is going to be due on the 1st of June. We will have a clearer picture of what this whole crisis has done to our incomes, sort of in late June and over the summer. And, you know, there's just, it's way out for you, a sense of all of the moving parts that go into play here. So, if you were to start the recruitment, again, after the current city manager departs, that leaves you with basically six months, which is still more than enough time to conduct the sort of 12-week recruitment required. Your latest time to start that would be the week of September 4. So, if you wanted to push this out until the last possible minute to conduct a 12-week recruitment, you would have basically until the beginning of September. There are a couple of other things that happen in September. That is really where finance and Ms. Lochner have targeted, that we will have enough data to provide for you a revised budget for discussion and potential approval. And, of course, we know that September, not just for you, but for everybody, is really around Labor Day, of course, is when whole-scale politics starts in the rest of the world, and there's all of that chatter to contend with as well. So, that's sort of a critical timeframe, we're not suggesting that you would start in September, but it is really the latest you could go for a full 12-week recruitment. Staff recommends at this time, and I think we'll let the city manager get into this a little bit on her own, that the city manager has the authority and would appoint an internal candidate as an interim city manager to start in that capacity no later than May 30, 2019, and that we would direct CPS HR to begin the recruitment of city manager for selection and placement, obviously no later than November 29, 2020. And in saying November 29, 2020, I realize that that obviously up there should be May 30, 2020 as well, not 2019. There are, of course, a buffet of options in front of you, but I think I'd like to use this opportunity to allow the city manager to go into a little bit of the details behind this particular recommendation, and stand by for any questions you may have.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may, Sabra Newby, city manager. And speaking with Mr. Mark Gregerson, our HR director, and then seeing correspondence back and forth from CPS HR Consulting, of course, when we undertook this process, we thought that it would be pretty easy to accomplish in this timeframe. At this time, most of the candidates are pretty hunkered down within their own communities, responding to the same crisis we are responding to here. So, the recruiter's recommendation was maybe to wait a bit until this has passed, at least for some period of time, to get the best candidates if the council wanted to go forward with that process. As a result, it doesn't appear that we would have a full city manager appointment in place by the time I would leave, and that is why I'm recommending that we go with an interim city manager appointment in the meantime until this body can come together on a selection of a new city manager. Per the charter, that appointment of an interim city manager can be done by the city manager. So, I would be able to do that in short order, depending on the direction of this body. That's all I have to add.
Okay, at this time, Mr. Shaver, is your presentation finished, then?
I will reserve the remaining slides if there's any questions to which they are pertinent, so...
Okay, thank you. Let's turn it over to the council as a whole, and I'm just going to make it easier, so I'm going to start in reverse order by wards, and starting with Councilmember Jordan, do you have any questions, comments on this agenda item?
I do, I guess my question would be more on the formal recruitment process and the timeline for that. So, we're suggesting that it renew or pursue, but maybe not right this minute, but we don't know exactly when it would officially go into full gear.
Thank you again, for the record, Dylan Shaver, Chief of Staff to the city manager. That is correct. I think that, again, we are sort of trying to find a target date that does not exist right now. We know that, really, for all the proactive and prophylactic measures and reactive measures the community has taken to stop the spread of the virus, it really is in control of the timetable at this point. There are actions that the recruiter can undertake, they can sort of do pre-interviews with you, they can sort of get everything ready, but the real recruitment would not start until such time as we have a sense, I would contend frankly, not even a restoration of some sort of normalcy, so much as a sense of when normalcy would resume, or as close as we could get to it in the timeframe that the charter allows.
Okay, so if I'm understanding everything correctly, the most pressing thing we need to determine today is the process for the selection of an interim city manager while this kind of uncertain timeline process played out.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Weber?
Thank you so much. I believe that in this timeframe, we've been given the ability to have our manager appoint an interim manager, and I think that's the appropriate way to go today, to give her the ability to do so. However, I do believe that, with all due respect to every one of us, and I think we need to have, be able to have a conversation with the manager separately to see how she or give our ideas or suggestions, and just have a discussion with her before she makes her appointment. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Delgado?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I think we find ourselves in a situation where it would make sense for us to get an interim. I trust enough in our current city manager, Newby, to make an appointment that will fulfill the needs that we need immediate, and very much looking forward to us, you know, hopefully getting back into normalcy as soon as possible to make the, make final appointment as quick as we can. But I think it just makes sense under our current situation to get an interim, put in as soon as possible with the support of our current city manager before she leaves us.
Thank you, Councilmember Delgado. Councilmember Dewar?
Yes, thank you. I first have a question, and the question's for our legal staff. We had it up on the chart, definition, well, didn't really define, but my question is, what is a vacancy? Is it, can a vacancy, a permanent vacancy be told by a temporary appointment? That's my first question.
Can you repeat the question? Can a permanent vacancy be filled by a temporary appointment? Was that the question?
No, told. So, in other words, we were shown on the slide that when a vacancy is deemed to occur, and per charter, how long we have to fill it, and when it says fill, I didn't know if that is defined as permanent or temporary.
Well, I think it's permanent.
Of course, it's not defined, and we can define it.
Right, so you have six months to appoint a city manager after city manager, Newby, leaves, and she's going to leave at the end of May, so she'll be gone June 1.
I got that.
So, that's when that starts. And then, also, under our charter, Section 3.020, manager, Newby, has the ability to appoint an interim city manager, so...
No, I understand that.
Okay.
My question was, the wording in the charter, it says, "fill a vacancy," and I did not know if they meant permanently or temporary. In other words, if we put in a temporary person, does that pull the timeframe for having to make the permanent?
No.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may give a little bit of clarity here, I think the question really is, obviously, an interim city manager would continue that clock of six months going? If the council approved a contract with a city manager for a six months or nine months or whatever the timeframe would be, so that that person would not necessarily be interim, but that their contract would be some period of time that is relatively short, would that stop the shot clock, proverbially speaking?
So, my opinion is...
Thank you, you did a great job explaining that.
Right, no, I think you have to appoint a city manager within six months of city manager, Newby, leaving, even though there is an interim city manager in that position. So, you have, council would have to take action to appoint that person permanently within six months.
Okay, but I mean, if we select the timeframe instead of indefinitely to be a certain other timeframe with a contract, I do believe, my understanding of our charter is that would stop that clock. So, that's my interpretation, it doesn't say anything about how long or short a contract would be. We have a contract with manager, Newby, we would have a contract with an interim, so that's my question, so perhaps we could come back to that, and you could check on that. I'll just make a couple of comments. First of all, I really have appreciated Sabra and what she's done for us. I agree that I think we obviously need to appoint a, call it temporary interim, another appointment sooner rather than later, because we need to have continuity of operations, and we need to have some certainty as we get into this difficult period with the budget continuing to respond to the pandemic and revising our budget. So, my thought on this is, I appreciate everything, and I appreciate the staff getting right on this. I would prefer that the council select our manager, and I have a lot of confidence in Sabra, but I think that if we have her appoint an interim under this provision, which is not the only provision, that she has to balance out a lot of things, and she might make a good decision in her best estimation, but I don't know whether, you know, it would be the best in my estimation, I'm just going to say that, probably would, but it might not. So, I would rather have the opportunity, I've watched this city council for many years, they have appointed interim and acting and short-contract managers before, and they've done it. I'm interested in knowing who is even interested in this role, so my preference, you know, I may be, you know, out of step with the rest of the group, or other people may agree with me, but my preference would be to know who is interested and do it in a public way. And the reason is, is this person, whatever time periods are going to be in, has to be responsive to the public as we are, and they have to know that the manager has our full confidence from the council, and that we have verified or validated this appointment. So, that's my thought, I'd like to get a list, and people have to know, their name would be on a list, on an agenda, or maybe just have the mayor put forth her top three people that she would consider. But I would prefer to see some kind of process where it's done in the daylight and in the public, and that's just what I would prefer, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Councilmember...
Did you get that, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I, oh, I did, I'm sorry, I'm going to go to Councilmember Breckus, and then I know that the mayor would like to speak as well, but I'll start with Councilmember Breckus.
Yeah, I very much agree with what Ms. Dewar says. I think the appointment of a city manager, whether it's interim or not, needs to come from our table and us, because the organization, our regional partners, need to know that the person we put in there has been affirmatively acknowledged as who we want to lead, not a result of, you know, a departing city manager based upon maybe seven conversations she had, I really do agree with that. I also agree that whoever is the interim person, we could put on a contract for six months, and that would be, they would have full authority of the city manager, I'd like to see them have a contract, a full authority of the city manager for a six-month term. I think that there's precedent in this region for putting contract, city managers on six-month contracts, and I can pull that up and bring that in as an example, but I think that then would toll the charter provisions. And I think there's also, this charter provision, which is interesting, works in parallel with some other charter provisions, and I think there's a very specific reason why it's in here for this situation, but I think that it's definitely within our abilities to put on an interim person for a six-month person, for a six-month period. I do agree also that when the names come forward, if there's multiple names, that they probably do have to have the waiver and the signature, you know, to be discussed. And I would, you know, the mayor has special powers under emergencies, but the appointments is the normal role of the council, so I think that, because it's not a strong mayor form, appointing isn't really the role of the mayor, I would say that maybe the council decides how to get those names, you know, in one way or the other, an open application, or really restricted to any member of the council putting those forward, or any member of our organization putting their name forward, some hybrid we could do, but people would know then that their name will be on the next agenda, they'll be signing a waiver, and so on, to be entered into for a six-month contract. And frankly, I'd like to shorten up the transition period, I think that, under the six-month provision, I think Ms. Newby was giving, doing us a favor to help us work with that six-month period, but I'd like to see the new manager, interim and manager appointed maybe in the next two or three weeks, and then Ms. Newby could transition as out of that position and help on some special projects and allow that smooth continuity. I think there's a little bit of uncertainty in having your leader be on in an emergency situation in this, you know, one foot out the door situation, I'm not entirely comfortable with that, so I'd like to see a transition that's shorter but allows her to work on handing the workload off to someone who has the city council's appointment authority for six months.
Okay, and I'll just add my piece before I go to the mayor. I am concerned, I understand the concerns raised by my colleagues about making an open and transparent process. Obviously, this is not the ideal process, or one that any of us would want to see used for the hiring of the permanent city manager. I think my concern is that in trying to sort of find persons who might be interested or candidates, for lack of a better word, for just the interim, I don't know that our staff is going to want to go through that kind of a process, meaning like the typical putting our names in the thing, going through some kind of vetting. I mean, at the end of the day, I believe that the city manager can make an appointment of an interim, can train that person up for a period of weeks, and then hand over, at the handoff point, which I think was the end of May or 1st of June. And so, my own thoughts are simply... I certainly think that an interim is likely to come from internal candidates rather than external candidates, and making that appointment sooner rather than later, I think, benefits us all, as Councilmember Breckus said. I mean, we want to have someone get up to speed as quickly as possible, and certainly I think the, perhaps the pool of people who might even be willing or interested in such a position is relatively small, and couple that with persons who are interested and also qualified. So you're talking about a very small pool of persons, and so ultimately, I want to defer to the process that has been laid out by the staff today in terms of how it would be sussed out. And again, I'm open to other thoughts or ideas or discussions, but it is an a-traditional method and process, and one which I think we can get through, and we'll have someone good here working in the building, especially as our staff relies so heavily upon the direction of the manager's office. Obviously, we also have a vacancy in the assistant manager's office. We'll soon have one in the HR department. We just need somebody who is going to come alongside and stand in the gap for that period of time. So those are my thoughts, and I appreciate everyone's well-informed decisions and discussions. I'm going to turn it over to our mayor. I know that you have some thoughts yourself. Madam Mayor?
All right. Thank you so much. You know, I have full confidence that Sabra could bring forth a name. However, I think that because we are in a time that is sort of critical and under emergency, I do think it should be someone that the council is comfortable and knows internally. I think that would be best. I'm willing to bring forward a name, and the council can vote me up or down at the next meeting. I don't know the legalities of putting names on agendas. I don't know if that's what we have to do. I would refer to Carl Hall on that. However, again, I think it should, you know, because we are in such uncharted territories right now, I would say I would prefer the council to make that decision, because for the next six months, or however long you, the body decides, that it needs to be someone that we're familiar with, especially during a crisis position. So I'm happy to do, you know, that sort of process. And again, and I would just ask the council to, you know, have an idea of, you know, others or other candidates, if it's not someone that, you know, the council votes in favor of.
Councilmember...
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Jordan, I'm so sorry, but I think I may have skipped you, or if I haven't, I'm coming back to you.
No, you didn't skip me. You're coming back to me. I guess the two-part comments about somehow shortening Ms. Newby's contract, and if we put them on interim, that she should be maybe dismissed early, I do not support that at all. Second, I think maybe there is a way, taking into consideration what the mayor has suggested, and actually what Councilwoman Weber kind of suggested, if maybe there could be some individual council discussions with Sabra, and in kind of response to that, she may come forward with a selection of names, and behind, you know, in having discussions with some of our department heads, might be able to reach a consensus that all of us can kind of be comfortable with, and without it being kind of, and I tend to agree, you know, we put in Arlo as the assistant city manager. Our city manager did that, so, and I think that was a great selection. So I just, I don't, I'm trying to find a way where we can keep the ball rolling, keep our input front of mind, but not have it be a very cumbersome, clunky process that, you know, we will certainly go through for the permanent city manager. I'm just not sure that for the interim, that we need to do that kind of a process.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Doer.
Naomi Doer. Yeah. I've had the opportunity now to listen to everybody, and I think there is, as Ms. Jordan said, sort of a compromise method. But what I want to do is, I want to make sure, and I want to be clear, that we do not, I want to make sure that we're following the open meeting law, and that we do not kind of build a consensus offline with our manager or without. I mean, I think they call that a walk-in quorum. I have no problem with us conveying to both the manager and the mayor our thoughts and opinions on the topic. I think that's excellent. But the concept of sort of arriving at a consensus offline and then bringing it forward bothers me in terms of just trying to, the spirit of the open meeting law. I know that some of those issues have been told, given the emergency that we're in, so I understand that, that we might have to make some changes, but I'm just trying to live within the spirit of it. And so to that end, if you said, if we said that the manager would consult with the mayor, who is sort of our collective body director, without having special powers, as we've discussed, I would be comfortable with that. But I do think a name has to appear on an agenda, and we have to vote, and I think that would be appropriate, because that person has got to be, have to build a relationship with us as the council, and they've got to manage through a very difficult time, and they've got to know that they have our support and confidence. And I would not want an appointee, especially, let's say, you know, this appointee is in place, let's say, for six weeks, and then Ms. Newby's time comes at the end of May, I would want them to know that we have endorsed their selection, that they have our confidence, that it's not Ms. Newby's gone for four months, and they're still operating, not sure of their authority. So that's, that explains, I hope, my thoughts on this. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may, Councilwoman Jordan for a clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
And to clarify, my comments were in no way that I expected nor intended anything to be done with the lack of transparency. My comments were to say, in a mechanism similar to what our company that we have engaged to find our permanent city manager would go and solicit from all of us, what are you looking for? That's what I was suggesting, is that that sort of information we could provide to the mayor, to the city manager, and have that discussion of what we are looking for in our interim city manager, and with that information, that could come forward. But in no way were my comments meant to be in any way anything but transparent.
And if I could acknowledge that, just because I happened to speak after Ms. Jordan, I was not responding to Ms. Jordan. I was responding to the collective comments. I totally agree. I'm sure you were not personally recommending anything but what you just said. I'm just speaking for myself and what I heard from the larger body. So I appreciate your classification, and I hope you have that in mind, too.
Thank you, Councilmembers Jordan and Councilmembers Doer. One second, Councilmember Breckus. I want to go to, I want to go to City Attorney Carl Hall for just a moment. Mr. Hall, I'm just wanting to make sure, obviously, every member of this body wants to follow to the letter, the open meeting law, and the issues surrounding transparent and open governance, right? There's no dispute that every member has the same goals in that regard. I want to understand, what are the limitations in this process as it relates to any of those kind of things? Because I'm not sure I see the connection between the two. As I understood it, we were agendized to talk about a process by which we would essentially find an interim city manager. I think that is different than when we will go out and try to find a permanent replacement, and therefore, some of those noticing requirements, and people's names being on agendas and that sort of thing. I'm not sure those are applicable, but I'm asking you to direct some traffic here on this issue, if you can give us some guidance in that regard. Because at the end of the day, I'm very much in tune with allowing the mayor to bring forth a name. The mayor will consult with the city manager. I think the mayor has her pulse on the city in a way that is unique, and then if we, for some reason, on the council, don't agree, we have the ability to vote in that regard. So I'm leaning towards, simply leaning on the mayor to make the recommendation with the work of Ms. Newby and she combined to bring forward a person. But I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Hall, and hopefully I've explained my question to you.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. Yes, I believe that names can be mentioned in light of the way that the issue has been agendized, and there's an exception to mentioning names in NRS 241. So names can be mentioned. Obviously, there's not going to be any action taken on those names or deliberation on that today, because we're not making the decision today, but certainly, names can be brought up.
Well, and furthermore, it isn't the issue of persons' names, it's when the person's character or question is being called into integrity that you have to be able to provide them with a notice and a lawyer to be present. That's not what we're doing today.
Correct.
Right? And so I just want to make sure that we're narrowly looking at this issue of when someone's name might have to appear on agenda, and how it is seen to the world. Because I think there has been a little bit of confusion along that issue, and I don't think that we have in any way gone afoul of the open meeting law, or the particular NRS, which speaks to calling into character, or calling into question, the nature or character of a person's employment.
No, the exception applies to consideration for employment positions, and that's what we're doing, so we're fine.
Okay. Thank you for that. I want to come back to Councilmember Delgado... Oh, no, I'm sorry. Councilmember Breckus, I think you were next in line.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I just, Carl, I guess my question actually was, at the next meeting, wouldn't we have to put a person's name on the agenda for legal purposes? And the reason I was just saying that I could bring someone forward, and the council could vote me up or down, was to avoid any walk-in quorum for that very reason. Is that, is that correct, Carl?
Well, I think to be safe, until we have an appointment, then we, you know, don't need to mention any names, so...
No, I know. I'm just, let's say, I brought forth Joe Smith. That name would have to appear on the next agenda, am I right?
Right, yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's just all I wanted to clarify. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Breckus, you were being patient. Thank you so much. Sorry. It's hard for me to figure out who's up next.
Yeah. So I think that it's fair to talk about qualities and characteristics, and for me, I want someone internal. I know that we are losing an assistant city manager. We don't have a lot of tenure in the city manager's office, or even some of our department heads. We have had a lot of turnover, and we're in a public health crises also. So I'm looking for an experienced manager who has the confidence of the council. The confidence the council is often given when we confirm our chief's example, and then also someone who knows our organization. And for me, and as an internal person stepping up, one who we have confidence has backfill to step in. And for me, the voice that, the person I'd like to see put forward interim six-month period is Chief Soto. And so that's who I put as my top choice, if he's inclined to do it. And to Ms. Jordan's comment of pushing Ms. Newby or out, I just think that we could keep her on until her day of expiration, that she is set forward, which is, I think, May 29th. But I would like the council to make this appointment of whoever it is, and I support Chief Soto, in the next two weeks, and so she could move into a special project status so that the organization, our regional partners, can know who we are with right now. I think it's very difficult to have and look to leadership, which is so needed right now, of someone who's, you know, kind of on their way out. I think that's a, you know, it's no fault of hers. I think she was being fair when she put her time to leave, but I think that she needs to maybe step aside, and we need to make affirmative commitment of the individual that we want to hold down the fort for the next six months while HR is helping us with the consultants through this process.
Thank you, Councilmember Breckus. I think your comments are well-taken. I appreciate your thoughtfulness. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Delgado.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm thinking through this quite a bit. I appreciate everyone's perspective on moving this forward as quick as we can. In terms of bringing a name forward, is that a suggestion that we all bring a name forward next week? Because if, or the next council meeting? And the reason I ask then is, if we don't all support the one name that's brought forward, then we're just kind of pushing the conversation into further weeks. And so maybe, I'm just, and then my other thought is, it sounds like we're putting in quite a bit of work into all of this to, I feel, then, to my gut, is then why don't we just open it up and find a permanent city manager? I mean, I just feel we're in a, we're in a time of need and leadership, to what Councilwoman Breckus stated, and I have trust in our city manager now. I trust that she knows the organization, and she sees who may fit in appropriately in the interim. I'm just trying to figure out, it feels like we're still, I don't want to spend a whole ton of amount of time trying to find the, us figuring out the interim when it's just an interim, that should come from somebody internally, rather than just spending a lot more time then figuring out who's going to be our permanent. And so there's an underlying feel for me that there may be a lack of trust currently with our city manager, which is new to me, but I trust in her that she may bring forward somebody that's going to lead the organization in the interim during this, during the health crisis that we're dealing with right now. It's hard for me to think about finding somebody to contract out, who's still learning the, and has a trust of the overall organization. I mean, those are my two cents. I'm supportive either way, but I'd also want to probably see more than one name brought forward at the next council meeting, if we're not all able to have that conversation, which we should, and of course, for open meeting law purposes. But there should probably be more than one, because if we're not all supportive of that one, then we're just kicking the can down the road. Thank you.
Councilmember Delgado, I certainly hear what you're saying. This is Councilman Reese. I am concerned largely that, about our employees, right? I think our employees are all doing incredible work. They're all very focused on the jobs and tasks in front of them every day, and I don't think any of them want to necessarily be trying to jockey for another position, because ultimately, someone might be interested, but some might not get it. And at the end of the day, I am much more hesitant to create those kind of leadership fissures among staff, when I don't think they're necessary, and nor do I believe that staff wants them. I mean, at the, I believe we can find the right person, and obviously, Councilmember Breckus has mentioned our chief, who I think would make an outstanding, you know, interim city manager. I don't know ultimately, because I still am a little unclear from Mr. Hall about what is the requirement that we do so, or that we have someone's name on an agenda. I'm still a little unclear about that. I'm not necessarily saying that I think we should all come with two names on a piece of paper at our next meeting, throw all those names on the board, and pick from one of those. Again, I go back to a consistent belief that our mayor and our city manager, Ms. Newby, can find the right person for us to lead us during this very difficult time, and I will trust implicitly their judgment to do so. And so I don't ultimately understand this name-on-an-agenda piece of it. This is unfamiliar to me, and for those at home who are drinking with us today, as a lawyer, you know, I would say I don't understand the overarching concern that's being raised, other than the one which I've already identified about transparency and openness. So I'm going to go back to Mr. Hall and just see if we can't find a way to put a pin in this specific issue as it relates to how we might go through this process.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. So pursuant to NRS 241.033, subsection 7B, casual or tangential references to a person or the name of a person during a meeting do not constitute consideration of the character alleged misconduct, professional competencies, or physical or mental health of a person. That goes to whether or not they have to get noticed to discuss that. So, you know, I think during the course of this meeting, there may have been some casual or tangential references to certain people. But if we're going to make a decision as to who should be considered, then those names should be on an agenda so that, you know, the public has notice as to who we're going to talk about, and whether or not they're going to be considered for the position of city manager, so...
Okay. Okay. And so, put another way, and I'll just try to be as layperson's term as possible. If I, you know, Vice Mayor Reese said, "I want Chief Soto to be it," and I demanded a vote on that today, I couldn't do that.
Correct.
Okay. So, we need to find an opportunity to have an agenda item which identifies with specificity a person or persons from a list from which we could choose. The mayor would move on such list or person, and we would vote it up or down. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So, now I'm getting a greater sense of how the process might play out. And I think it goes back to something the mayor said earlier. And so, I don't know what the stylized motion will ultimately be, but I am supportive of the mayor bringing forward, certainly in consultation with the folks she consults with, which would be Ms. Newby, and making certain that that space is available to her on our next immediately available agenda.
If that's a motion, I will second it. Do her.
No, wait a second. This is Bonnie.
Okay, no problem. It wasn't a motion quite yet, so I wasn't looking for a second. But thank you for the sentiment. Let's come to Councilmember Weber.
Sorry about that. Thank you so much. I wanted to ask, in the beginning of this conversation, when this item came before us, probably at least minutes ago, maybe an hour or so ago, didn't we say, or didn't Mr. Hall say, or maybe even the manager, that wasn't she the one by charter that she is supposed to appoint? The interim person.
Ms. Weber, this is Saber Newby for the record. Yes, however, we could certainly, if it was the interest of the council, stylize the agenda item that would make the recommendation to me to appoint, and then I could appoint that person as the body desired. That would be, I think, one way to effectuate that. I would obviously allow Mr. Hall to speak up if he had any other thoughts on that.
Thank you. And second of all, I appreciate that. I think we've gotten away from what was talked about at the beginning. And number two, I don't even think our agenda item allows us to be having discussions of who we'd want to appoint or any of that in this item.
All right. So, we're not discussing who we're going to appoint. And I would agree with you, Councilmember Weber. We're not talking about who we want to appoint today. We're talking about the process for appointment and the timing of the appointment and the ability of city manager Newby to nominate her replacement in the interim until a permanent person is found.
Thank you for speaking up now. And I think it should have been happening sooner when we had other discussions about appointing certain people and that sort of thing. So, hopefully, Mr. Hall, that you will speak up when we're off the agenda item. Thank you.
May I be recognized? This is Councilmember Breckus.
Councilmember Breckus, you have the floor.
I interpret the appointment of an interim city manager by your, when you have a city manager, to be in the way that often if Ms. Newby is going on vacation or out of town, you know, for business, she says, you know, "I appoint," you know, whoever she appoints. That's the concept of the interim city manager in my mind. When you have a manager, but you're just putting that person in to be an interim acting in her capacity. I think that in the absence of a city manager, it's the job of the council to make that a formal appointment. And I think that needs to come forward with the agenda. And what we're discussing here is that process. And I've expressed a process that I'd like to see an internal candidate. I've mentioned a name. I don't think, some can question bringing out a name, but I can say what, you know, I can present what I, what I want. But I think that we do need to make that appointment ourselves. She can make those appointments all day long when she's the city manager and not able to serve in that capacity for a period of time. But I think when she's no longer of service, it is our job to make that appointment. And so, that's how I read those charter provisions. And whether or not we do that by coming forward at the next meeting because the mayor, you know, lists three names or whatever, or, you know, we ask for, you know, an interim application form at City Hall, that might work in combination too. But I think that's what we're doing here. But I do think the council members individually should be expressing some degree of what qualities they're looking for. I mean, that's what we're going to do when we're recruiting. And I'm looking for qualities of proven management leadership internal to our organization because we are in remarkably challenging times right now, as we all know.
Councilman Breck, or Councilmember Breckus, you are entirely correct, I think. And the qualities that you've highlighted and outlined are ones that we all value, and I think your wisdom is strong on this issue. I want to try to figure out a way so we can get through this agenda item. I know everyone has had the opportunity now to speak twice. If I, if I'm incorrect in that, someone please speak up and say that they desire to discuss additionally. And then if not, I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Jordan to see if you can get us to a motion.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Reese. And I'll take a stab at this. I would make a motion that we direct our mayor, in consultation with our city manager, to bring back names or names of potential interim city managers at our next city council meeting. In addition to that, I would suggest that our manager and our mayor have discussions with city council members about desired characters in said appointment.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion on the motion?
I just discussed that I do echo the concern of the walking quorum. So, they don't need to consult with me. I've been upfront with a qualities and a suggested name. I'm open to others, but I don't need to be a part of that serial conversations with the bodies in the motion. So, I just want to let that out there. But I will support the motion.
Okay, I'm not sure that, Councilmember Jordan, I know that you're not seeking a serial meeting in that regard. And so, I understood your motion to be clear. The motion's been made. It's also been seconded. And without any discussion, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, for my colleagues on the phone, we all need to get up and stretch, maybe get a breath of fresh air. I'm going to take us into recess for the next, actually, that's what we'll do, is we'll go into our attorney-client meeting, but that also gives everyone a chance to stretch. We'll be in recess, or we'll be in recess for an attorney-client meeting until approximately 12:45. If we can come back earlier, we will. But this gives everyone a chance to get to a different location in our room safely and also give us a chance to get up and stretch our legs. We'll be in recess.
Not quite, we're just about to. Not quite, we're just about to.
Councilmember Breckis, can you hear me yet?
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, I think we are all set to bring your meeting back to order.
Okay, for my colleagues at home, I'm calling the meeting in chambers back to order. And I believe that we're ready for item D8. But before we do that, I want to go back to Madam Clerk. I understand there was some additional public comment that was lodged on one of the earlier items. And I just want to make sure it's known for the record, so I'll turn it over to Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. We did receive additional public comment from Teresa DiLoreto concerned with item B10. That information was submitted to council in advance of the meeting, so it has been lodged on the record. And they do have it. So with that, there's no action that's necessary from that information. I just wanted to clarify that we did receive four public comments on that item instead of three, as previously noted. With that, we are transitioning to item B8, which, as you discussed, this is deference or reduction of business license fees.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to invite Mr. Stockham forward because I know that we do want a presentation on this item. But before we do that, Madam Clerk, did we have public comment specifically on item D as in dog eight, D8?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we received public comment in support of this item from the Reno Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, I did read Ms. Silver's wise comments on it and note them for the record. Mr. Stockham, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, council members. Arlo Stockham, Community Development Director, speaking again in a muffled way through our masks. This agenda item deals with business license deferrals and reductions. As everyone knows, this has been an extraordinarily difficult time for a lot of businesses, especially our local businesses, who have been forced to close or otherwise reduce operations. who have been forced to close or otherwise reduce operations under the governor's directives. We've received numerous inquiries and requests for both the deferral and the reduction of certain fees. In response to that, and because of the timing, the city approved a very straightforward one-month extension of fee deadlines to get us through fees due through the end of April. The recommendations on this agenda item would supersede and basically include and expand upon that 30-day extension. We really have two primary pieces that we're recommending to the council. The first is the deferral, so the extension of deadlines to pay fees. This would apply to businesses that have been closed or had portions of their business closed due to the state of emergency. The recommendation is to extend the deadline for payment of fees by the greater of 90 days or until 60 days after the end of the state of emergency. This has a fairly minor fiscal impact to the city, largely involving the delay of collection of fees. The carrying cost for that is probably a couple thousand a month roughly. And as well, some of our fee collections will likely bump into the next fiscal year. So that could have an impact on year-to-year spending. The second, now we're not, as part of that deferral, those businesses that are staying open, full operations, would continue to pay on time. This would also supersede our existing grace periods, which range from 15 to 60 days for payment before penalties are applied. So it would be extended to 90 days or 60 days after the end of the state of emergency. The second, and perhaps more consequential, component of this recommendation is to waive business license fees for those businesses or those business components that have been required to close. There is a fiscal impact to this, but it's also a matter of fairness. If we're not allowing businesses to operate, should they be paying business license fees? This would apply, our fee system is a little bit complex, try to simplify it. We basically have two ways of applying business license fees. Many, or most fees are based as a percentage of revenue. So those fees will automatically decline with reductions in revenue. We're not recommending any additional adjustments to that. The other type of fee is a flat rate fee, where you pay the same amount regardless of revenue. The primary categories for this are gaming licenses and our alcohol sale licenses. There's some smaller topics included in that category as well. Our recommendation is that those fees be prorated, so businesses don't have to pay the license fee for the period in which they're required to be closed. Similarly, businesses with multiple licenses would pay for those that remain open and not pay for those that are forced to close or not operate. We have a minor additional item, which is basically a standard practice already, where we could entertain case-by-case requests from individual businesses for a payment plan for their fees. That's already built into our administrative process, and there may be some additional situations where we could do a payment plan. But that would not be an automatic approval, and if it was significant, we'd likely require financial security. So in closing, we know this is difficult. Staff has also been in discussions about other forms of relief we could consider. But the payment of fees is timely for a lot of businesses trying to make payroll right now. So we have before you today this fee reduction package. It's a little hard to estimate the financial impact, but we tried. And our best guess is it's about $285,000 per month that the businesses are closed. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, I'm going to start with Councilmember Jordan. I know this was of particular interest to you. Councilmember Jordan, are you there, please?
I am, and thank you very much. I know that small businesses have reached out to us with concern with regards to this item. So can you describe to me again the understanding? So you're a business that has been deemed nonessential. And let's say you, your doors, when this is all said and done, your doors have been closed for two months. And let's say your monthly prorated, your average monthly business license fee, if you, you know, paid it on a monthly basis, was $100 a month. So you would ultimately pay, at the end of the day, you would pay $1,000 instead of $1,200, and you would not have to pay that during the period, and you wouldn't have to pay anything until you were back up and working again. Is that correct?
That is correct, and actually, the deadline to pay would be 60 days after you're back and open.
Okay, so just, I'm just trying to make it, and I understand there's some nuances with revenue, and it's not as, maybe as clean for every business as I'm trying to describe it. So what we're saying is the business that is currently closed, because they have been forced to close in this process, you're not paying anything, we're not saying you have to pay anything now. And when you do reopen, you're only going to have to pay the amount for the month in which you were open, not the full 12 months.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Stockham?
This is Councilmember Breckus.
Okay, one minute, Councilmember Breckus, I'll come right back to you. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mr. Stockham, I'm not entirely understanding all of the things in the presentation, so I maybe have characterized it a different way. First of all, I think that the deferral period may need to be longer, right? Saying that it's a deferral and then saying, I think it was within 60 days of reopening. I'm not sure, some of our businesses that might be most dramatically affected during the closures, and we'll just pick a random bar, I don't know if they're going to have the wherewithal to restock and then start making a profit and bringing back employees within that 60 days. And so I would like us to consider something, but with a larger period of repayment over it. And so in that regard, I think sometimes restaurants and bars, which have operated under smaller margins, or just an art supply house, however it is, whichever the business is, we need to be able to give them a longer period of time. So that's the first concern I have. The second is, I'm not, I'm characterizing it as businesses in categories. So there are those that had to close, right? There are those who were, who have stayed open but have been dramatically affected. Meaning, I know that there are some businesses that have stayed open, but maybe their profit margin is zero or negative, or they're just able to open the doors to keep their employees going. And so I sort of see a different way forward, maybe, and that is either, for those that had to close, some kind of 100% waiver of those dollars during the period of the closure. And that those who either stayed open but have been adversely affected, or those that chose to close but were not required to, might on a percentage basis be given some reductions or waivers or extend it out. I'm not really looking to support a certain tier of business either, because I think like, if you're, I don't know, I'm going to just pick on BJ's Wing Shop. I don't even know if such a business exists, but I'm saying if BJ's Wing Shop is part of a national conglomerate and chain, and they either stayed open or were affected, I'm not saying I want to race in and support that entity. So I would be looking for something that tiers it in some way, that maybe businesses under 50 employees or with a certain amount of revenue in a period of time would be able to be the ones who would be benefited most by whatever efforts we have. Because at the end of the day, and I think all of the colleagues would agree, our goal here is to support businesses, given that we have some unknowns. We don't know about the length of this or what the duration will be. We don't know what the federal impact of dollars coming into this community might be. But what we do know is that when we get on the other side of this and we try to reignite this economy, we don't want to be in the position of having entire streetscapes that are essentially closed because businesses could not afford to reopen or went out of business during that period of time. So I'm looking for just a few more tweaks to this good work that you're doing. And I do think that this memo is awesome work product, it is a path forward. But I'm looking for maybe just a little bigger leap and seeing if we can't get there together. Because I do believe that we can support our small businesses. And I know that each one of us, as council members, have been beseeched by businesses who are hurting and who have made the difficult choices to lay people off. And there are things that are outside of our control, obviously. And so to the extent that we have some tools in the toolbox, I want to deploy all of them, whatever they are, and to the greatest extent we can. And so those are sort of my thoughts on it. And I know I wasn't necessarily asking for comments or thoughts, but Mr. Stockham, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I would. In terms of the timeline for the deferral, there's nothing magic about what we wrote up. Longer would be perfectly fine. The fiscal impacts to the city are not that major for the deferral of fees. In terms of the categories of businesses and the tiering, again, our system's a little complex. But this really, the vast majority of businesses, retail establishments, restaurants, businesses like that, their fees are based strictly on a percentage of revenue. So if they close down, they're going to have no fees by default. So what we're really talking about here are a few categories of licenses. There are gaming licenses, gaming is shut down. So their fees are proposed to go to zero while they're shut down. Where it gets a little more nuanced is the alcohol licenses. Some businesses, like Rayleigh's and 7-Eleven, are open and are doing wonderful business. And, you know, in our opinion, should probably continue to pay those fees. We tried to target this to the businesses that have been closed or otherwise impacted. So where this is really going to come into play is, say, a restaurant. Their restaurant fees would go to zero if they close, or go to next to nothing if their business is down. But how their alcohol license fees are applied. Clearly, the on-premise alcohol, like a beer you get with your pizza and drink at the pizza establishment, that's shut down. You can only do carryout, you can't do open containers, so that would be 100% refunded. The off-premise alcohol, some businesses are closed, the liquor stores are nonessential, and some are in conjunction with convenience stores and other stores and are open. So I think it's a fairly small category of businesses that aren't going to already have their fees dropped. And the last point I'd add is, as I mentioned earlier, we are, as staff, looking at a broader relief program to bring forward for council consideration. We're certainly open to any amendments council wants to make today. I guess my recommendation would be to approve something today, but it doesn't have to be the final thing. We could come back in a month with a more nuanced package to add on to this or to supplement this to address some of those considerations raised.
And Mr. Stockham, if I may, please just ask a specific question. So you and staff are collecting sort of data points and best practices from across the country, from our federal partners, states, other localities, as to what they're doing. And you're saying that more additional things are likely going to come down the pike as you develop them and get to know better the components of the federal government's, you know, coming to the fore with some dollars and those kind of things? Is that a yes?
Yes, it is.
Okay, because in the mask, I can't see you nodding under there, and I know you are. And so, okay, well, I'm really excited about that. Again, my, this community is a vibrant community, and especially the gig economy is one which has, is one of the reasons why we all love living here. So to the extent that we need to be in this together with our business community, I want them to know we are all in it together with them. There are, again, things that sometimes are out of our control. But the things that we do control and the ideas that your department can birth are the ones that I think will provide a signal to our community that we are going to be open for business, right? And that we want them to survive on the other side of this. We've made some very difficult choices, and I'm so everyday thankful to our mayor for being a leader in this area and nationally, in making the difficult decisions she had to make. And then for our governor to come alongside and support that. We have to be there for the businesses when we reopen. And we all know that. It is something that I know your department is taking a yeoman's work on doing, inasmuch as I've had people who have called and said they have spoken to your department and now know a path forward. So I thank you for that, and then I'm going to turn this over. I think Councilmember Breckus, you were patiently waiting, and I'm sorry for getting to you so shortly.
Oh, no worry, I'm not, I'm not going anywhere, not in a hurry. So the question, you know, understanding the way you calculate that most are based on revenue, and so that kind of works it out themselves, I'm comfortable with the way you're talking about going. But the one question was about the package folks, because we did, it was copied on a letter of a business owner over in Ward Three, and I saw some reporting, the package folks who are, the bars who have the package licenses or the brewers, are they, they're closed down, right?
Those facilities that don't also serve food are closed down. There are a handful of businesses that have package licenses and are also restaurants. They can continue to sell their package to go in conjunction with food. And then obviously, the grocery stores and the 7-Elevens and such are also open and selling package.
Is that under the governor's regulations, or do we have the discretion? Because I thought I saw that some of my colleagues were going to bring this to the agenda for us to work on.
This is our strongest interpretation of the governor's orders.
Okay, okay, and it's not on the agenda today. So say I'm a brewery, which obviously has package, as they do. Or one was a bar that I think made like liqueurs and had package. Our interpretation of the governor's regulations is they're closed down, they're shut up. They will fall into this framework of getting reimbursed for their quarterly package, correct?
That's correct, and it's not just a reimbursement. We would charge them a lower fee in the first place, so they wouldn't have to come up with the money.
Okay, and then tell me this. Say I'm a restaurant, but I don't have package. Are we issuing, actually, we did issue some package on here. Are we issuing new packages for people to alternate their operations during this period of time?
We have not to date. Those licenses on today were pre-existing applications. I think that's a discussion that's on the table for approval, not under this agenda item, but potentially separately.
Today, at a subsequent meeting, not today?
I believe that would be the appropriate venue.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Hold on one second, Councilmember Doer, because I know the mayor wanted to weigh in, but I want to just share with Councilmember Breckus. As one of the punchless items that the mayor gave me early on, I have been trying to work through the complexities of various types of, we'll just call them license holders and privileged items. We're just not, we haven't been able to get consistent information from the state. And as a result, we're still working through some of those things. I know, like you, you've probably seen Ward One businesses who have reached out and said, hey, I see Clark County is doing something different, or Henderson or Las Vegas, and look at what they're doing in New York. We are trying to gather all of those things to bring forward something, if something is to be brought forward. But it just hasn't given the complexities of other things we're dealing with, and the code enforcement's overwhelmed nature in just the few early weeks of the pandemic. It's just not quite there yet. But needless to say, if you have something which you believe represents good or best practices, or you have constituents who have reached out to you specifically on this issue, please send them my way, because we're just sort of trying to collect all of them in one central place, so we know what the need is. So hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah, it does, and that's really why I tried to make the case for that agenda item that follows on what's being done. So I really appreciate you addressing in the, in the context of this item.
Okay, thank you, and I'm going to go now to Madam Mayor, I know you're eager to weigh in.
Yeah, thanks so much, Vice Mayor. Arlo, thank you so much for working through all that, that really, it helps so much. And that's why I'm so glad that you are there, because one thing is, you're a big advocate of big advocate of business, and that's so critical. What I was going to ask is, it's been really challenging, as we know, the rollout for the PPP at the SBA and all of that. There are a lot of people that will not get that money right away. It just depends on, you know, who you banked with. I know that Bank of America today had a, had a lot of rollouts, which were great, Wells Fargo did not. So there, my point is, is there's going to be a lot of businesses that are going to be waiting a while to get that PPP if they've applied for it or the disaster relief. With that being said, is it possible to also maybe put something in place for, like, a year, that's like a hardship sort of waiver, that they can either, you know, defer that till later, even if it's after, you know, the certain time period, just so that we can work with businesses? So it's just another tool to have, just in case? Is, is it possible to do something like that?
Yes, on two levels. What we have in front of you is we would consider those types of requests case by case. Additionally, to Councilmember Reese's suggestion of potentially doing a longer deferral, that could be another way to get there. So we can, we can do that through different mechanisms, but absolutely, there's going to be situations that warrant that.
Right. Every situation's going to be different. Well, that's great. Okay, I appreciate it. Thanks so much, Arlo. Good job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Doer, were you next in the queue? I, I thought I heard you say something.
I hope so.
Okay, thank you so much. Your floor is yours.
Okay, I just want to say to the whole group, yourself, Mr. Vice Mayor, to Arlo and to our mayor for leading the charge here, I'm just so glad we're, we're addressing this. You were correct. We're all receiving messages of appeal to help with this issue. My question on whatever we, I heard Arlo say today that he really wants us to move out with a something. And here's my main concern, without trying to overcomplicate this, in fact, I'm trying to simplify this. Where I'm confused is there's dining rooms, I mean, restaurants that are operating, you brought it up, Mr. Vice Mayor, in a reduced capacity, but they're still running. Maybe they're only doing 10% or 20% of their normal business. There are other businesses that are, just have reduction in sales, and then there are others that are doing just fine. You mentioned grocery stores, I think, and that do sell alcohol. So what I'm trying to, I'm struggling with is how do we differentiate these? And the second question really has to do with the governor's order. When he said "nonessential," we didn't go and say, you know, on each business, you're nonessential, you're essential, you're, we're not sure. So what I'm wondering is, how do we know if a particular operation followed the governor's order and actually did shut down, and then could maybe justify or get this kind of, you know, help and assistance? So how are you planning to do that?
Let me try to take the second question first. There would be two levels of kind of verifying that it was an eligible business. We are actually fielding a ton of calls, and we're documenting those, so we have spoken to many, many individual businesses, and we have that information with us. In addition, in order, what we're proposing is, in order to qualify for one of these fee reductions, we're putting together an application form where we would ask the business to identify which type of nonessential business they are and to verify that they were, in fact, closed, and we would review those to make sure that, you know, open, prospering businesses weren't applying for this relief. So that was kind of the best thing we could come up with for that.
Yeah, that's, that's really helpful, and that was the main question I had.
And to your, just very briefly, to your initial question, the restaurants are a big category here. The restaurant itself is a revenue-based fee, so their license fees are automatically going to go down in proportion to their reduced business. That is about 70% of our license revenue. And then the on-premise alcohol is closed, so under this proposal, they would get a prorated reduction as well. There's really a fairly small number of businesses that kind of fall into these gray areas, I would say breweries are one of them, that we're going to have to just, you know, dig in individually and verify that it's appropriate.
All right, thanks for the info, and I didn't know restaurants were 70% of our license revenue.
The retail, restaurant is together with retail, so pretty much any retail business, including restaurants, they pay fees as a proportion of revenue.
I got it. Well, that makes a lot of sense, so they naturally rise and fall based on their revenue. But it's a one-time license versus alcohol, which is a four times a year, right?
Oh, it can get very complex. Many businesses have an annual fee plus a quarterly fee, so there's combinations.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Mr. Stockham, you mentioned breweries, and I think this is a complicated one and perhaps beyond the questions here, and we'll come back to this at another agenda item. But I understand that breweries, of course, have live, active agents, right? There are yeasts that are involved in the process, and certainly, I'm hopeful that we are not putting our brewery community in the position of their product, for lack of a better word, dying. And so hopefully, I've seen some creative solutions. I think distributors are working with, restaurants are working with breweries. I even saw one brewery was giving away six-packs to healthcare workers to honor their commitment to our community. So hopefully, with this specific niche of business, we're thinking outside the box about how we're going to help them keep their product alive, for lack of a better word. But thank you for mentioning the breweries.
We are. That's a challenging one, and just so everyone's aware, the manufacturing portion of the breweries, where they're brewing the beer, that remains in operation. It's really the, the retail aspects, the bars, that are impacted by the governor's orders, and there's ongoing discussions on that, and we've been tracking what other communities inside and outside Nevada are doing. And I'm sure this will be a topic for discussion next time we have this on the agenda.
Okay, and maybe we'll be able to add to our agenda for the next time. Councilmember Jordan, I know you've been patient. Did you want to weigh in again?
I, I just had a question, since we're on this subject, and I suspect there are many businesses that may be watching closely what happens here today. If someone has a question after whatever action we might be taking here, what number would they call with questions?
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm glad you brought that up. We have a business hotline that we set up extended hours for. It's open seven days a week, from 7:00 to 7:00. The phone number is 334-2090, 334-2090. In addition to questions while we're here, we're very open to ideas as well, both from the council members and from the business community at large. So we're trying to put together a survey to send out to see where they're struggling the most. So not just any questions, but please don't hesitate to contact us with ideas as well.
Thank you very much. And Vice Mayor Reese, if you're, if anybody's ready for a motion, I can take a stab.
Yes, I'm ready to receive it.
Thank you very much. I would make a motion to support staff's recommendation with the one modification that the, the period in which we allow people to defer their payment be to 90 days after their reopening rather than 60.
Second to motion, Weber.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and now I'll open up for questions or comments on the motion. I'm going to start. I didn't totally understand, Councilmember Jordan, and I want to make sure that I'm jiving with something the mayor had really said earlier, and that is, are you talking about the length of the period of deferral as being 90 days? Because I personally believe we should go out further than that. I think the mayor said a year. I, myself, was thinking about two years, so I want to make sure that we're clear. And maybe, Mr. Stockham, can you clarify, because I don't want to miss the opportunity to help these folks, but is, are Councilmember Jordan and I talking about two different things, or are we talking about the same thing, and I'm talking about the deferral period?
I think the motion was the same thing. It was extending the deferral period, but the motion was to extend it until 90 days after the businesses reopen, and then what I'm hearing from Councilmember Reese is perhaps an advocacy for a longer period than that.
Okay, so that would be my issue, Councilmember Jordan.
Okay, well, here, and this is why I was trying to, you know, get a, get a start of a motion, was to, my understanding was that we would, the initial staff recommendation was 60 days, so after you came back in, you were able to reopen, your lights go back on, you would have 90 days to pay your prorated business license, and it would be prorated based upon the month in which you were actually physically able to be open, unless you could, unless you could display that you were in an additional hardship. I thought, I thought Arlo stated that there was a process in which, if you needed to go beyond that 90 days, that that would be on a case-by-case basis, unless I misunderstood.
No, that, that is correct. That case-by-case deferral is on page two of the staff memorandum, so we took that as being a component of your motion.
Okay, Mr. Shaver, if you would approach the dais or the lectern.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, Dylan Shaver, Chief of Staff, City of Reno. Of course, the, the city will implement whatever you vote on today. I just wanted to remind the body that staff has not scored out or tried to, been able to determine any financial impact for deferrals of the length of time that you are, that you're contemplating. I think that, you know, the, from Mr. Stockham's recommendation, up to 90 days is something we could easily sort of roll with. I would implore you, please, if you're going to go into something in those longer, those longer timeframes, perhaps what we would do as staff is bring it back to you at a future meeting within those 90 days and allow you to extend it out, so that Ms. Lochner and her team has the ability to tell you what the long-term budgetary impacts of deferrals of that length might be.
Ever a thoughtful approach.
May I ask a question?
Councilmember Breckus.
Mr. Stockham, is, I can't remember, do the business licenses pay in advance or in arrears? Because if you're prorating, that would imply that they, you pay after the year, but I thought your renewal, you know, because they're all based on individual dates of when you license, pay in advance. Is that right? How does that work?
My understanding is it is in advance.
Okay. So I just want to, I just want to, yeah.
Let me.
I mean, I guess.
I think we have someone in the room who may know a little more detail on this than I do.
This is city clerk. I can comment that it depends, is the official answer. Some of our businesses do pay in advance, and then they shore up, so to speak, but many of them are due from a past year's gross receipts or how they are recorded, so you're actually paying the amount based off of arrears. It depends on the type of business.
Okay, because, you know, the concept was mentioned of a prorata, and that would imply that you're paying in arrears, but the, the average, the businesses that I know, you know, are just the simple ones of annuals, those are paying in advance when they come due, and so you probably, it might be some accounting sort of thing, but maybe if a, if a business only has an annual and they pay on their renewal date for the year going forward, but they were shut down for the last three, the renewal would have a credit to it, you know? So they would have a credit on the next year's bill that would reduce, you know, the past year for three months, or they may just kick their renewal day out three months, is kind of how I'm seeing you would play with that. The rest, on the gross receipts, I, I can see what the clerk brought up. I'm just trying to figure it out mechanically, because I think what you don't want is you don't want this deferral to kick into the next year's one, because then you've got, it would seem administratively confusing, are they paying last year's or next year's? And so that, that would be a question, too. It'd just be interesting to see how you're going to work it out, then.
Yeah, we're, we're in the process of developing an operations plan and of each type of license that's paid in many different ways. Sometimes they pay in multiple steps. The bottom line is, if people have overpaid under this program, we'll credit them for their next payment, and if they've yet to pay, we'll reduce the billing accordingly. So we can, we will have an administrative system set up to, to make sure the accounting all balances.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may.
Manager Newby.
City manager. At this time, I think what would be best to get from council is really the policy direction, and then, you know, staff will go forward. There'll, I'm, I'm certain be lots of details that will need to be worked out and implementation, and I certainly trust our, our very hardworking and knowledgeable staff to implement that. So the policy direction really is what we're, what we're seeking today.
Okay, and I think Councilmember Jordan's motion does encapsulate that policy directive, understanding that you'll have other things that you may add to or, and my hope, of course, is that you are in constant communication with various business advocacy groups, including the Chamber of Commerce, who are on the front line of working with their, you know, many, many, many thousands of members. Because at the end of the day, I know, Arlo, that, Mr. Stockham, your office wants the same thing that we all want, which is to help our businesses to survive so that they may then thrive. And so with that in mind, I believe, unless there are additional questions, we've had a motion on the floor and also a second, and so I will call for the question at this time. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, transitioning to item D9, this is ratification of the inter-local agreement between the City of Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County, or, and the Health District, excuse me, for the response for COVID-19.
Okay, I'm not sure we'll need a staff presentation, but I'll ask first, Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment on this item?
I have none.
Okay, and with that in mind, does council desire any presentation on this item?
I have a question. I, I'd just like to understand the distribution of cost shares for the command response and what we think is going to be federal reimbursement.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Newby, because I think that she's been on the front of that. Ms. Newby, do you have some comments directed to Ms., or Councilmember Breckus and the body?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. In terms of the cost share, we would expect that the federal, the FEMA monies would cover about 75% of the costs that are determined to be regional costs. The state, in my understanding, in the past, had provided another 12%, but I think that there's, that sort of changes, depends. And then the locals split the rest. You should have in your email box, I believe, today, if not coming very soon, the memo for the cost-sharing agreement that was reached among Washoe County, Sparks, and Reno, in which Reno would pay 35% of the remaining costs, Sparks 15, and then Washoe 50. So that cost-sharing proportion is really just what is left after all of the other funding sources reimburse.
Thank you for that. So, and how are we paying for that out of this fiscal year, or will it be next fiscal year?
I would believe it would likely be next fiscal year, or maybe even the year beyond that. The way that it's happening right now is that Washoe County is fronting the actual cash flow for, for these purchases, and they would be reimbursed and then enact the cost-sharing agreement from there. So Washoe County is really providing the cash flow.
So there'll be true-ups then after that? And then, the cost share is an appendix to this agreement we're ratifying, or it's a separate document?
It is a separate document.
Okay, and, and other agreements that you signed, the one for the WellCare contract, is that a part of this? is that a part of this agreement or is that a separate document?
I think we're getting off topic on this agenda item. But the WellCare agreement was one of the regional costs for the incident management team for the housing of largely homeless individuals who needed to be isolated.
I'm sorry if you feel I'm off topic. So this agreement gave birth then to the authority and the costs to do the WellCare agreement that's going to be doing some services, human services for us for one of the branches, is that right?
So there's a number of different costs. You're largely correct. So by this document, we have delegated authority to the incident management team and the incident commander. Within that process, or within that incident management team, there are a number of costs that are, have been incurred and continue to be incurred. Things like the WellCare costs, things like the trailers at Edison, the things like tests, purchasing tests for people to be tested. So those items are largely considered regional costs. And then they would be subject to first, as I mentioned before, the FEMA reimbursement, state, and then the local cost sharing agreement for whatever proportion is left.
Is the City of Reno personnel going to be signing all those documents? Or does the regional command have authority to sign all those procurement documents under this agreement?
Thus far, there haven't been very many contracts that have come my way to sign off on. That said, on the larger dollar figure items, the incident management team and the incident commander does check in with the managers in order to confirm that the purchase is reasonable and that they're okay with it.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. I'm just trying to understand how this agreement then comes down to, you know, our participation as it, you know, prolongs and what communication or loops they have back to us. Thank you.
I think Councilmember Breckus raises a good point. And I just want to just, before we move on from this, I'm interested to understand, because you've identified the way in which the percentages would be paid by various entities and who is floating the cost, is WellCare a contract which is our responsibility 100%? And we would not be getting reimbursement and we are not seeking reimbursement from others? Under this agreement, I'm talking about this agenda item suggests the ratification of an interlocal agreement, which has some cost sharing elements to it. And I'm saying, does the WellCare contract in a vacuum fall under the cost share?
The WellCare agreement is not actually in a vacuum. It is within the incident management team. So it is one of the costs that would, that is subject to the cost share agreement after all of the reimbursements on the front end.
Okay, Councilmember Breckus.
Does that answer your question?
It might, I think so. Councilmember Breckus, that was ultimately one of your points, correct? Is you were trying to understand where it was being paid for out of?
Yeah, yeah, well, I just, I just want to understand if this agreement, to what degree does this agreement delegate procurement powers to who? And what is our role of the City of Reno to look at those procurement powers? And then the administration of those contracts is also another question of, you know, how they're administered. So, and I guess first and foremost is maybe a tally of all the contracts coming to us in some sort of regular reporting so that we can see, you know, for our budgetary responsibilities, what the running, you know, obligations are.
And I can certainly provide that to the council members as I receive it. The main contact for the tracking of these costs is the Washoe County Comp Controller. So I have gotten one report directly from the Comp Controller. And so I can certainly share that. And as I get updates, I can share those with you as well.
Thank you for that. Any other questions from council on this item? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion. Councilmember Breckus, are you prepared for a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to ratify the agreement.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Breckus. Can I get a second?
Do yours second.
I have a second by Councilmember Breckus. And in the absence of further discussion, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, item D10, presentation and direction for the FY 1920 and FY 2021 budget priorities based off the COVID pandemic.
Okay, I'm going to bring Ms. Lochner forward. Madam Clerk, may I ask before we do the presentation whether there's been public comment on this item specifically?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we received public comment on behalf of IAFF submitted to council in advance of the meeting that has been lodged into the record of their concerns.
Okay, thank you for that. Ms. Lochner, the floor is yours.
I have a presentation. All right. So I will go through the first few slides fairly quickly because I wanted to explain what the scenarios meant that I gave you at the last meeting. We don't need to go through them. Again, these are scenarios that we put together based on no data, just what if scenarios. And we'll talk a little bit about the general fund. And I have some other handouts too, as we go through the presentation. So we look at our revenue scenarios and they're based on three factors. We look at the revenues that are going to be impacted. We look at the duration of the impact, how long will the economic activity be disrupted? And how severe will the disruption be? And so we've put together scenarios based on just guesses of how that could roll through the city for us. We talk typically about just our two main revenue sources, C-tax and property tax. So what I wanted to point out is we have scenario A, B, and C. And those numbers in front, the 50, 75, 45, 25, that is, represents the last four months of the fiscal year saying we should get 50% of our March revenue, 75, or 25% of our April revenue. As you can see, we're going to drop by 45% in May and then drop at 25% in June. So that's, that's one scenario. So we have an A, B, and a C scenario. A being that this would be a short-term impact, C being it's a much longer term impact. So I really just wanted to explain that to the council so that you can look at these and understand what the charts mean. And again, these are just guesses and suppositions at this point. So same thing with.
Ms. Lochner.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Vice Mayor, just so I make sure I understand the premise of this. Is the 50, 75, 45, 25, is that by quarter or by month?
That's by month for the last four months of this fiscal year.
The last four months, so that covers which months, March, April, May, June? Or, excuse me, April, May, June, July?
March, no, March, April, May, and June. The months that we've been shut down and through the end of the fiscal year. And fiscal year ends on June 30th.
So it's not really a quarter, I guess it's a third, is that?
It is a quarter, it's a quarter and a month.
Okay, so a third of the year.
Yeah, so essentially, the impact affected us beginning in March. And so we are trying to show what could happen.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
So we, again, we like to give you numbers, we like to give you a chart. So each one of these has a chart following it to show, you know, the overall expectation. And the overall expectation really is that we're going to show a reduction in our C-tax revenue as opposed to where we were on track to be above our projections. Now we're on track to be below at the end of the year. And I'll get into what we do about that in a minute. Property taxes a little, this one really is just for illustration. Our revenues for the, for this year are already pretty much set. We may see a reduction in personal property tax. But pretty much this year, our revenues are set. But we wanted to give you an illustration of if the property taxes were affected, you know, kind of how that could roll out. And property taxes typically have a lag. But we don't know whether in the next, so all the appeal periods have passed for the coming year. That doesn't mean that they're not going to allow some additional appeals or allow them to change their approach to valuation. It's likely not going to hit us next fiscal year, but likely the fiscal year after, when they may change their valuation. And it's yet to be seen how that might roll through. So again, we wanted to show you the chart just to show how property taxes, you know, the budget versus the three scenarios. Property taxes are much closer, would you come down to the losses there, than C-tax. It's not quite, it's not as volatile of a revenue source as our C-tax. So other revenues that we're expecting to be impacted would be our gaming and privileged licenses. Those are done on a percent of gross revenues. And we expect their gross revenues are going down because they're closed. And so this will, that revenue source should go down as well. Business license, we just talked about. And we kind of modeled that based on the C-tax scenarios. Gaming licenses, you know, parking. We're not going to project any additional revenue from parking. You know, again, parks and recreation revenue. If their facilities remain closed, their revenues are not going to be coming in. Fines and forfeitures are, we're expecting to be down. Earnings on investments, of course, is going to be down. You know, franchise fees will be down. If you have large businesses that use a lot of power, they're going to not generate the cost. And so we're going to see several of our revenues go down. But it's too early for us to even really understand what that means. So essentially, we're modeling based on this year's what could happen next year, essentially. Because we don't, we don't really have a past budget for next, you know, a budget that's been adopted by council for next year. And we don't expect $25 million to be, you know, to go out of our budget this year. This is just kind of a future model of what could happen next fiscal year based on what we're seeing and hearing in the financial community. But what I wanted to really get into is where we have some potential for savings. And so we do have potentially in our services and supplies, the departments may not spend all their money. They typically don't spend all of it, but they try. So there's potentially a million dollars there. And we've kind of combed through what they have. And, you know, some of them are contracts that are already in place and need to be paid. We have vacancy savings of approximately $5 million within the general fund and almost a million dollars in the other funds. We are going to do a premium holiday on our healthcare for May and June this year, which will not only benefit our employees, it'll put a little bit more money in their pocket because they won't be paying their portion of the premium. But it does save the city $2 million. And that fund is really healthy. And we were, before this happened, we were talking about a potential premium holiday anyway to get back in line with where the funds should be. So taking two months of this fiscal year and then evaluating if we can do another month or two next year, we'll look at that. I also wanted to note that we have in our current budget built-in flexibility. So with the current hiring freeze, as you saw, it's about $5 million of savings from the vacancies. The services and supplies is somewhere between $1 and $2 million that we think we can save. We have the city manager's contingency, of which $1.3 million still exists in there. We do have the stabilization fund, that there's $2.9 million in the stabilization fund. And the medical holiday gives us $2 million. So essentially, we feel that for the current fiscal year, we can weather the loss of revenue over the last four months, whatever that's going to be. We don't know yet. But we think that we have built-in flexibility, about $13 million that can cover shortfall this fiscal year. And then when we look at next fiscal year, the budget that we're getting ready to pass, as putting out the budget that we had presented to council essentially was a status quo budget. And within that budget, we also have a lot of flexibility built in there. One thing I do want to point out for our debt service payments, we have in our investment portfolio, we have a short-term portfolio that currently has two years' worth of debt service. We've been rolling it because our revenues have been supporting it. So we've been rolling that investment from maturity to maturity to make sure that we have the money for our debt service. The hiring freeze, if that continues on, could potentially save $6 million. There's currently 58 open positions, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Services and supplies, we could potentially save around $3 million. We have a budget for the city manager's contingency in there of a million dollars. We can reduce the fleet transfer. So you just approved an augmentation that gave fleet, I think, $2.5 million. And we had $3.5 million built in to go to fleet in the budget. We can reduce that because they got money they were not expecting. We can reduce the workers' comp transfer, that's $7.4 million that we do for that a year. That just puts off paying down the liability. The liability exists. We're not required to pay it down. It's good practice to do that. We were doing that. We had it built into the budget.
Ms. Lochner, are you, are there advancing slides? I'm so sorry, but.
I just have a piece of paper on that one. And I can provide all this to the council. This was something that we put together when the rating agencies called and they were looking at redoing our bond rating. And we wanted to allow, let them know how much flexibility we have built into the budget. So I will provide this to the council. It got put together late last week. We also have a general fund transfers of $2.5 million, most of that. We have a policy where 1% of the prior year's operating budget goes to the next year's capital. And that's about $2 million of the $2.5 million transfer that we do from the general fund. So we could forego general fund projects for a year. We can reduce the OPEB transfer that we do is about $1 million. And then, of course, we are going to get some FEMA money that's going to help us with this. So again, we have a lot of flexibility built into what we are bringing forward. My next few slides really are some information that the council had asked for at the last meeting. So we had asked for what the vacancies were. And so my team put this together based on a report we get out of our accounting system. The problem is there's a couple, couple issues with this report. I know for my department, the risk manager was not on there because it was in a different fund, but it is 50% general fund. And I, we noticed after the fact that some of the vacant positions in here really belong to the street fund. And also because we were shut down in operations, some of our hiring has not caught up with the report yet. So we're still, it's a work in progress. It's a report that we created last year to try and assist the city manager with where our vacancies are, if we have long-term vacancies, do we really need those positions? We were really trying to get down into a much more detailed view of the organization. So this, these slides really just talk about the vacant positions. And then also the other piece of information council had asked for, they wanted more information about the grants we have in place. So the next couple of slides really just lay out the grants that are in place. And if there is some term associated with that, such as, like the Safer Grant and Fire, it's a graduated match and requires minimum staffing levels. So again, we've tried to note those things. What we are recommending that we take a wait and see on the Safer Grant on the SAFER grant because with the federal stimulus, we don't know what they might do. They may change the parameters of that. We haven't taken any money off of it because we can't, unfortunately. Otherwise... Well, actually, fortunately, because we might be in a much worse position if we had. But we're going to take a wait-and-see look on the SAFER grant. And when we come back in the fall, we'll probably have more information at that point in time. The other large one I want to point out is the Public Safety Center. We don't have... So, right now, we have $8.5 million ready for construction of that project. We're looking to see if we can stand up the building and move the staff for the money we have on hand because we are not recommending that we bring forward a loan at this point in time. We don't know what's going to happen. So, Quartz has their specialty court grants that they get every year. The other big one really is the grant for Moana Pool, and we're having conversations with them to see if there's any way we can delay our required match that was supposed to be nearly $5 million come June 30th, that we're not going to be able to match it. And we're hoping that they... Maybe they'll extend it. And so, our Parks and Recreation Director is having conversations with them on those. So, that's just was to outline all the different grants we have in project and are in the works and the projects associated with them. Again, just for information. And then, we get into, you know, the budget flexibility. So, yes, we are recommending that we adopt the budget as a status quo budget. We have to adopt our budget on time. The state has not said we could take more time to get it right. So, our recommendation is that we will adopt the budget. The only addition we are adding is the Clean and Safe Program. And we're going to continue reviewing all the positions that are vacant until we can determine the fiscal impacts. But, you know, while we say it's a hiring freeze, sometimes you have a position where there's only one in the city, and you can't do without it, such as maybe a city engineer. So, you want to make sure that you're not saying you have a hard hiring freeze. You're not hiring anybody. You need to have some flexibility to look at that. And again, as promised, we will come back to the council early in the fiscal year to let you know what the impacts are that we are seeing and possibly augment our revenues and expenditures associated with that. And that's the end of my presentation. I do have one slide I'd like to put up on the overhead that is talking about what we have so far in place as our... The costs for the regional EOC. And so, what we had received, and again, this is a few days old. They've bought, you know, they continue to have to do their jobs. So, Washoe County had reported to us that they had spent $5.2 million to date. The Reno's share of that at 35% would be $1.8 million. And then, with all the grants that we expect to come in, our 12.5% of that would be $227,000... $227,500. You look at City of Reno, so far, we have booked $165,000 in staff costs. Of that, only $22,000 is related to overtime and would be reimbursable. So, I just wanted to give you some update on that information. And then, just one final thing to remind the council of our strategic priorities for the year. And I will send this out as well so that you have the slide. But we want to make sure that when we are making the adjustments and looking at our budget, that we are keeping these in mind. And that's it. Here for any questions.
Okay. Councilmember Dewar, did you have a question?
Yes. Yes, I did. And this isn't the only question. But first, I just want to say, great job, Debra, for giving us a really good snapshot of where we are. And that's what it really was, was a snapshot of where we are and where you're thinking and where you see the issues. One thing I would like to request is that for the next couple of months to the end of the fiscal year, and that we'll probably be going through some kind of transition. The manager had already recommended that there would be a team that would review all hires or promotions, i.e., increases to the personnel line item. I would like to ask that in the expectation that very few of those would come forward, you mentioned one, a city engineer might be important. But I would request, and I don't know where the rest of the council is, but for this particular period, in this transition period and in this pandemic period, that we bring any hires or promotions back to council. You could bring those in a lump item and just list them if you want. That would be my recommendation because it seems to be right at this moment. That's the only really significant step we're taking right now. And I think the council should understand how things are changing before we either hire or promote.
So, I can assure you that there is a Position Review Committee that has been working in this city for over a year. Every position that comes forward comes to this committee. It is made up of the Finance Director, the HR Director, and the City Manager. We look at, is the position necessary? Could it be done with a different level of staffing? Could... Is there any other way to do the functions that this position does? We go through a thorough analysis on every single position that's come forward, and we've been doing this for over a year.
Right. And I'm acknowledging that. The manager laid that out for us, and I was really impressed with that. I'm just suggesting for this three-month period, April, May, June, while we're still figuring things out, that you do bring those to us. Whatever the suggestions of this... Or recommendations of this committee are, that would be my perspective, just so we maintain a handle on that for the next little while. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions from council?
This is Councilmember Breckus.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. You know, I do agree that taking on debt at this point in time is probably going to be very challenging. And so, you know, the big one on that is the Public Safety Center. And I think we need to put that front and center in what, you know, what and how we can go there. And I know the mayor's called a meeting for next week. And I think that I asked to put an item on related to these stimulus rescue packages. And maybe, you know, we can start to get some ideas of where we would, you know, put that money if money comes toward us, you know, if it's beyond just operations, plugging operational holes. So, I had a question on that short-term investment account. I didn't understand that connection to some of the other comments you made. You've got a... You've got, what, debt fund? Debt fund in short-term?
Let me explain to you how we manage our investment portfolio. So, we have a long-term kind of core portfolio, and then, we have a short-term portfolio. The short-term portfolio is put in place to mature when our debt payments come due so that we have a significant amount of money that is due twice a year for debt payments. And we invest that money so that it matures right before those debt payments become due. We have... And we've been managing it this way since we hired our new investment firm, which has been also just about over a year. And so, the core funds, we simply leave in the investment. That's the long-term piece. The liquidity funds are the ones that we target to come out and be available for us when we have a significant cash flow need. And what we've been able to do is each time that it came up for maturity and we had the money already able to make those debt payments, so we rolled the investment forward for the next maturity period. And we continue to maintain this short-term portfolio that is... Has specific laddered maturities to pay those larger cash payments that we're going to need to make. So, it's just the way we hold our money in the investments. And we have two years' worth of debt payments because we continue to roll it. We have grown that to the point where we now have significant amount of money in our short-term portfolio and can make those debt payments for the foreseeable future.
Okay. So, you've got a little cushion there to pull off of that to have it go on non-debt payment, ongoing operations, then? Is that what you're saying?
No. It's really is scheduled for those debt payments so that we wouldn't have to come up with the money out of the various, you know, like the general fund and the sewer fund or whatever fund has to pay that debt payment. We don't have to pull it out of the fund. It exists in an investment portfolio.
Okay. I get it. I get it. Okay. And then, the other question was about the positions and somewhat about what Ms. Dewar said. I mean, I've always argued that in the appointed positions, there should be quarterly updates on what's vacant, what is permutated off of the complement of the budget. And I've always felt like that. And then, I also think it's courtesy of the manager to let us know when hires, promotions, acting ups occur. I think that helps us know, you know, where our resources are at any moment in time so we can modulate, you know, our request to the manager on certain activities and constituent issues and so on. The one question I did have was about the Sustainability Manager position. I didn't see that position vacant, and then, I understood that position was vacant. And I see that's in the city manager's office. The Senior Management Analyst position is vacant. Are those the same positions or what happened there?
So, what happened there is we had an employee that is acting, and the Sustainability Manager position was the Senior Management Analyst. That is really a function of the incorrect management of position control that we have been working in the Finance Department to get a better handle on how we manage position control. When you have a person in a position that then is acting in another position, that person didn't vacate their, you know, position. So, there's some position control issues. And that is something that my team has been working on in conjunction with coming up with a vacancy report. We had to balance position control and work through those issues. And we're still working through those issues. And there's a lot of fingers in the pot, so to speak. And I think that, you know, there's three different work groups that put data into position control, and we have not given them really good, solid direction on what needs to happen when you have somebody in a position that's doing something else. They retain their position. And so, that's a problem that we're working through. And I noticed that there's a couple of other issues with that vacancy report. And so, we will continue to work on that and balance it a little better before we present it to council again. Just like I said before, the risk manager wasn't on the list, but it's vacant. So, you know, I added it in and told my team, you've got to get all the vacancies in there. I thought they had done that work. And we will figure that out. I'm sorry for the mistake there.
No worries. Councilmember Jarden?
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. I just wanted to say, thank you, Debbie, and City Manager Newby, and everybody involved with pulling this together in a relatively short amount of time. It really does give me a little bit of a breather on this issue. I know our budgets are going to be impacted tremendously, and we're going to likely have to make some tough decisions. But I appreciate the hard work that has already been done on this. With regards to the issues of any sort of employee promotions during this period for the next few months, you know, I'm in favor of maybe getting a memo on what those internal movements may be from the city manager or the interim city manager. I don't know that I want to slow during this fast-paced moving time we're in. I don't know that we want to slow things down. I don't know if the suggestion was to bring those back for consideration at the council or just in a reporting capacity. I'm not sure what the suggestion was.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Maybe I could clarify the suggestion?
I would not support bringing back positions to be filled to this body. If there are any, like, large aberrations that the Position Review Committee or PRC goes with, we can certainly report, send a memo to the council to let them know.
Thank you.
This is Naomi, if I may respond.
Ms. Dewar?
Yeah. I made the recommendation because manager and the Finance Director explained that there's a freeze on positions. I've been in government about 35 years now, and a freeze is a freeze. And I understand that there would be exceptions, and I totally get that. But I think it's important that our staffing component is the largest piece of our budget. I think it's 85%. And so, if we're taking on new refilling positions, I think we really have to take a look at it. So, I was suggesting that it come back. It didn't have to be an individual memo in every position, just a consolidation. And we do meet every two weeks, so I don't think there'd be that big of a delay. If people don't want to do it, that's fine. But I think it would be an extra control during this pandemic emergency and during this period. I'm not saying this is what we would do forever, but while we have a freeze on, I think it's important.
Thank you, Councilmember Dewar.
Councilmember Breckus?
The floor is yours.
Thank you. I kind of think she's right. Ms. Dewar's right because it's being expressed to us that the tool that we are most going to use in these periods of uncertainty is position control. And if there's pivoting off that through administrative actions, we should know because it's a number. It's changing the numbers. So, I do think that it's not an encroachment, an impediment, I don't think, on the manager's authority. I think it's been risen to our level of budgetary responsibility that the tool we were going to use is position control. And if there's any erosion or action off of that, I do think it should be reported out to us. And I think we should have this item on every meeting because obviously, a whole lot else is not getting done so we can, you know, respond to this. And this is critical of that. So, I think she's making a good, logical sense. I didn't... Her second statement, I think, really did convince me that that is a good idea.
Okay. Any additional?
Vice Mayor? But I guess I'm trying to get clarification from the city manager or maybe from the suggester, Councilmember Dewar. I'm in favor of a reporting of the sort of moves that maybe made. But I thought I understood that Councilwoman Dewar was asking that this body approve those. I'm kind of confused.
Right. So, that is correct. You are correct. I was recommending for the next three months, that's April, May, and June, for the three months remaining in this year. And the reason is, is because once we hire someone, that's a lifetime commitment. That's not something we're going to revisit on July 1, even though we were told that July 1, that we're pretty good this year. But starting July 1 next year, even the second year, we may have some challenges. I don't know what those challenges look like. And I think if the Review Committee makes a decision... I think they just showed us... I couldn't quite tell because of the way the slides were presented whether it was about 30, 50, or 20 positions that were currently vacant. And I think the staff are still figuring that out. So, my recommendation is to get that full list from our staff through the position control number and then assume no positions are going to get filled. As they said, that's what a hiring freeze is. And then, bring back if it's a city engineer, the city manager, obviously, we need that position filled. But I think in general, for the next three months, we should be careful until we have a better understanding. And it is our one and our primary tool covering 85%. So, just to be clear, I was recommending that what the group bring back their recommendation[1737.41] and that we consider it at a meeting. The next three months, we only have about six meetings left. That was my recommendation. And bear in mind, it's because it's a lifetime commitment to whoever it is.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm understanding entirely the lifetime commitment issue. Ms. Newby, did you have any additional comments that you wanted to add at this time?
Again, I don't support that recommendation. I would be happy to, as Ms. Jordan has suggested, report out any items or any positions that were approved for hire that aren't frozen, I guess would be the terminology, to this council to let you know. But the control of the positions and hiring and that process, I believe, is squarely within the responsibility of the city manager, whoever that may be. And so that's what I, that's all I have to add.
Okay, thank you for that. And I suppose where I fall at this moment is in support of the city manager and Ms. Lochner's recommendations. I just don't understand the machinations necessary to get through this other point. But I'm also not sure that this is within the purview of this agenda item. But I want to just move to Councilmember Delgado, who I think has been waiting patiently but would also like to speak.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. No, I agree with everything you just stated, Mr. Reese. I think, Vice Mayor Reese, I think it's, in many different ways, is digging a little too deep into the weeds about the operations as to what we need to do. We have very smart directors as of our city. That's what their roles are. I think they understand our fiscal position at the moment, and so I don't want to take that from them. And so I agree with our Director of Finance and with our city manager that they, people know, they're going to have to come through this very finely, and I entrust in them as credible, experienced professionals to be able to do that for us.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Delgado.
Mr. Hall, I'm sort of befuddled for a moment. It might be that the face mask is choking off the oxygen to my brain, but the item that we're stylized as D-10 is a discussion of lost revenues and grant-funded programs and decreases in expenditures. I'm not sure, I would be looking for a motion. I know that there's been some direction given, and it sounds like the manager has an opportunity to extend informationally, sort of a compromise of the information that's wanted. But are we in a position to make a motion that includes that? I'm not understanding.
I would recommend that the motion does not include the recommendation of Councilmember Duer.
Okay.
You can simply accept the report.
Well, yeah, and I just was expressing a process. I want to make sure I wasn't expressing that emotion. I do think it is good to report back to us during this time, and I am not meaning any slight to anyone. I mean, for the many years I've been associated with government, when there's a freeze, there's a freeze. And I just want to make sure I understand what we're committing to, and in terms of the idea of lifetime, unless you fire someone, they're with you until the position terminates or until they retire or until they choose to leave. So we're making a commitment that as long, when we hire you, we're going to keep you in that position unless something, you know, happens differently. So that's why. It's just been a very standard practice. I didn't know that it would generate this much interest, but that's good. But I would like to see a report. I think would be very helpful.
Yeah, it sounds like we've got the opportunity to do that, and Ms. Newby has indicated her interest in that. I don't know that we're going to hire anyone in the next several months. I scarcely believe that we will, or if we do, it'll be any earth-shattering move. But let's give some process the time to see what plays out. I appreciate your concern about its impact on the budget writ large. I think we'll get there together, and probably because of the nature of our meetings and the reporting, we are, I feel like we have a lot of information being reported all the time to us. Now we'll just have to figure out how to harness it the most. I think we've kind of reached the productive end of this discussion. Is there any additional council members who have additional questions, comments, or concerns on this agenda item before we close this one out?
I just have one question for Ms. Lochner. So the chart of positions that are frozen is, has some airs to it in terms of the budget items, and then that one about the sustainability manager, are there people who are maybe acting up? Are you going to get us a revised one before our next council meeting?
We're working on getting you a revised report. I'm hoping I'll be able to get that to you before the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm looking for, I guess in this regard, the possible action would be a motion to accept the presentation, or do we need action on this item?
Don't really need action.
Okay, so we don't need action. Mr. Hall has indicated that there is no motion that's necessary, and so we'll move on and we'll transfer back over to Madam Clerk.
Mr. Vice Mayor, your next item today is item D-11, Presentation, Discussion, and Summary of Actions Taken in Regards to the COVID-19 Pandemic.
Okay, and so I'm going to ask Mr. Shaver to come forward. Madam Clerk, did we have public comments that were specifically on this item?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we received public comment from Jeff Church in the position of being concerned. Also, we received an anonymous voice message with concern. Both of those have been submitted, the transcriptions, to council in advance, and they are lodged into the record.
Okay, thank you for that. And I think this was originally an item that had been originally pulled, but we came back to putting it on, and so I want to just be thoughtful. I know Councilmember Breckus, I'll come to you after we make an opportunity for Mr. Shaver to say a few words, and then maybe you'll be able to help us, Councilmember Breckus, in terms of what you want to chat about here. Mr. Shaver, for the record.
Thank you so much. Again, Dylan Shaver, for the third time this meeting. Happy to be here today, Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you. We scheduled this item D-11 on your agenda pursuant to Section 8.34.060 of Reno Municipal Code. That section of code lays out a series of emergency powers that are granted to the mayor, to the vice mayor, and to the city manager in the circumstances of a declared emergency. Those powers laid out come into play in the period of time between city council meetings, where the city council cannot act expediently, and is fairly broad. It allows for, for example, the establishment of a curfew. It allows for the city manager or the mayor to order the closure of all or portions of gasoline stations. It allows the prohibition of the sale of intoxicating liquor, as well as the performance and exercise of other function, powers, and duties that are necessary to promote and secure the safety and protection of the civilian population. That's just a minor sub-sample. The requirement under Section 834060 is that should those powers be exercised, a report come back to council that it has happened. And so you saw me here two weeks ago presenting, for example, the mayor's declaration of emergency and her subsequent order to close a handful of businesses across the city. That's also when we brought forth the city manager's waiver of the enforcement on certain shipping times and locations and things like that to make sure that food and other shipments could get to the grocery stores in the jurisdiction. I got the sense when we tried to pull this item, it is because from a staff perspective, and unless she has not told us from the mayor's perspective as well, there have been no such emergency orders or declarations made since the last time we presented this item to you. There seemed to be interest from the council that there be a broader discussion of just sort of things that have happened, and this is where I'm looking for clarification in that same period of time. But certainly, subject to the agenda item in front of you, we have nothing to report pursuant to RMC.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Shaver. Councilmember Breckus, I think you were originally concerned that we were missing an opportunity here to have a discussion, and so I'll bring it to you to see if we can have that discussion now.
Yeah, I really, when this came on, was trying to understand what this item was because Section 8, to the way I read it, doesn't really exist. I was trying to get clarification on what the person who wrote the agenda meant, and I understood through conversations with the city attorney's office that this is Title 8, Chapter, or Chapter 8.34. So it is this emergency management section of 8.34 is what I guess this is about. And that chapter does come into play, and maybe it is worth looking over and having some understanding that I didn't see on the staff report. There's something about a coordinator, emergency management coordinator position. Has that been filled, or is that interpreted to be the person we send over to the regional command center? I'm trying to get a sense on that.
Ms. Newby.
I will defer to Mr. Hall, but I believe that would be our emergency manager, who is the person that we have at the EOC participating as part of the incident management team. And I think it's also instructive, rather than looking at all of 8.34, to look instead at 8.34.060, which is the controlling section of code that we're looking at. Subpoint A gives the, gives the direction to report the actions to the council at its regularly scheduled meeting. So that's essentially why we're having this discussion. Subpoint B then lists out all of the things that Mr. Shaver previously talked about regarding firearms, intoxicating liquor, and other actions that could be taken.
And is, at the last meeting, did the mayor sign a declaration of emergency?
She signed?
I can come, sorry.
Go ahead.
The mayor had executed the declaration of emergency previously at the time in which we did declare, and then she has subsequently executed her declaration of order closing nonessential businesses. So both of those have been executed.
And that is, and that's under this, which section are those under? Is that under this?
Yes, this, Carl Hall, yes. That's under the section that we spoke about, Section 8.34.060.
And then, and then I guess what it is, is the council has to relieve those then by action? The mayor puts it in, and then the council unenacts those?
For the record, Dylan Shaver, the only provision in 834060 is that the actions are to be reported to council at its next regularly scheduled meeting. There is no further role for council specified.
Typically, Councilmember, if I may, Vice Mayor, pursuant to charter, also, the mayor can execute these declarations of emergency. It has been our past practice in which, when the emergency has been ended, the mayor will then end the declaration as needed.
Okay, that's 050. Now, what about, there's a couple other provisions of the removal of debris, and are we enacting any of those? Because I am getting emails about debris and litter in different places. And then there's also a succession order that the city manager is supposed to issue. Has she issued that? I just, I'm really trying to understand the mechanisms of this, and then also the relationship to what the governor's done.
Councilmember Breckus, I think I'm struggling to understand what the question is, and so you have somewhat, I think if we didn't have masks on, you would see quizzical-looking faces in chambers. So just help us understand what you want to...
Okay, Section 8.34-100.
Okay, I'm looking at it.
The city manager shall require a succession of authority listing to be maintained in the city's emergency management plan in case he is unavailable or otherwise unable to perform his duties during an emergency. The list shall not be less than three positions deep. Is that, where's that list? Do we have that list? It may be relevant because we have an assistant city manager who's leaving on Friday.
For the record, Sabra Newby, I do not believe that I have that in place, but I will certainly get to it very quickly.
Okay, and then also the debris. If we could look at 8.30, 8.34070 and talk about the debris, I think I sent in for the record a videotape of a fire that went on before all this emergency, but I understand that property on Cemetery Road has a lot more debris on it, and am hearing from people who are concerned for their safety who live near where that fire occurred. So I really was wondering, when I saw this item, are we moving into this 8.34 and, you know, going through and checking how we're administering over it? Or are we also going to talk broadly about, you know, have a standing idea, item on pandemic response?
And if I may, Councilmember Breckus, you just are wanting to understand more broadly what powers we are or are not exercising under our emergency powers, and you're wanting to kind of go through each of the enumerated ones in the charter to make sure we're fulfilling them?
Well, it's not generally, it's specifically, okay? Specifically to this 8.34, which I think is the relevant item, and a checklist of what is and is not being done on this, I think, would be helpful because this is the world we're working in right now. I realize we've stood at the command center, but we also have, you know, items in here to comply with, it seems.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I certainly appreciate that, and we will certainly get to that. Regarding the fire that you showed, I understand that that was cleared by code today. It was on private property. And so it has been cleared. That said, I do not believe, and of course I would defer to the attorneys in the room, that Section 8.34.070 that you cited earlier relates necessarily to that situation.
Okay, can I ask a question about that? If that was moved, that debris, that debris is the debris of people who are camping there, and I've seen some guidance sent out by the Regional Incident Command that says, don't move homeless people unless they have a place to go. Could one then, is one to understand that those, that debris, those camps, if they were moved today by code, they were taken in, the people who are homeless were sent to a place to go?
That I do not know. It was on private property, so presumably the owner did the clearing and advised if there were any individuals. That said, I do respectfully think that we are off of our agenda item.
Well, 8.304.070 about removing debris lets us go onto private property to remove debris, so that was part of that question, too. But thank you for your thoughts that are off topic.
Okay, if there are no other questions, then I'm going to bring it back to the body. This was not styled for action, and so I don't believe a motion is necessary or appropriate. So we'll move back to Madam Clerk to get us to our next agenda item.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we're on item F-1. This is an ordinance adoption to be read by the city attorney.
Ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6560, ordinance to amend Title III, Chapter 2.06, Article II of the Reno Municipal Code entitled, "Appoint of Offices to Add Director of Utility Services Job Title and Qualifications," in Section 2.06.050, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on this item?
We do not, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, in the absence of questions from the council, may I have a motion, please?
Moved and approved.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Jordan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Any further discussion at this time? Hearing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Okay, the motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, we are on item G-11. This is the Ward III appointment to the Human Rights Commission. I will send it back to Councilman Delgado for his appointment.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, before we go to Councilmember Delgado, did we have public comment on this item?
We have none specific to this.
Okay, Councilmember Delgado.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm looking to appoint Marco Castro to the Human Rights Commission.
Okay, I have a motion by Oscar, Member Delgado. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, I have a second, and the motion has been seconded by Councilmember Duer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Marco Castro Borghese.
Item G-12, this is appointment to the Ward II Neighborhood Advisory Board.
Yes, Madam Clerk and Mr. Vice Mayor, I would like to recommend Julia Hammett at this time, and I would also like to bring the item back again at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. We have... Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Dewar to appoint Ms. Hammett. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a Councilmember Weber, thank you for that. I have a motion and a second. Any, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, item G21, this is.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Member Weber.
I just like to see if I can reopen an item, and I don't know when the appropriate time would be.
Give us a second, we'll come back to you near H.
Thank you.
Item G21, Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on this appointment?
We have none.
Okay, any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Dewar, can I get?
I have a question.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have a question. We're, we are on item two, right?
Uh, G2, 2.1, I think.
Correct, this is two.
And 2.2, do we take them together?
They are separate.
No, they're separate. Okay, so we're on G21. Councilmember Dewar, can I get a motion from you on this item?
I first wanted to make sure I understood. I, we've been through this before, and I know that the other jurisdictions have, could someone summarize for us, just have the other jurisdictions taken in action on this already?
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I can weigh in on this. Just so the council, to refamiliarize you with this board, the Joint Coordinating Commission, they make an annual appointment recommendation. This is to be a person from either the body of the City of Sparks or the City of Reno. The body has recommended Councilmember Breckus, or excuse me, Councilmember Weber, and Sparks has not taken their motion yet, however, the expectation is that they will be bringing forward this recommendation as well. And the two cities alternate.
Okay, so.
The two cities do alternate, okay. Sorry.
Correct. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. So this time, the appointment is ours, and then they would need to concur, and the next time, the appointment was theirs, and we would need to concur with them. Is that correct?
That is correct, based off past practice.
Okay. So was Councilwoman Weber interested? This would be, you're already on the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, and now this would be an appointment to the Western Regional Water Commission. So are you interested in doing that? Okay.
Yes, I am, thank you so much.
Okay, yeah, so I would recommend that we appoint Councilwoman Bonnie Weber.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Dewar. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
I'll second it. Thank you.
I'm not sure who made the second, other than Councilmember Weber, so I'll say that there were two seconds. I have a motion made by Councilmember Dewar and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Item G22, this is an appointment of an alternate to the Tom Worf Joint Coordinating Committee. Councilmember Weber is currently the appointee to this board, and we are just searching for an alternate based off of review of the interlocal agreement.
And Madam Clerk, I assume we do not have public comment on this item at this time?
Correct, we have none.
Okay, any questions or discussions from council?
I'll do, I've done it in the past, and I'll do it if no one else stands forward.
Okay, I take that as a motion.
I support that. I support that as a motion.
A motion and a second by councilmembers Breckus and Weber. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, we're on item H1. This is an update from council on boards and commissions.
Okay, before we go back to H1, I think Councilmember Weber, you had requested an item be reopened that was on the consent agenda, as I understand it, and so I'm going to give you the opportunity to identify what item you want to go back to and see if we can take a second to reopen it. Councilmember Weber, did we lose you? I'm so sorry, the technology is befuddling.
It looks like we may need to come back to this.
Okay, we're going to come back to that in a second. Councilmember Weber will call back in. Let's go to H1, and I'll just go in order as it's presented to me. Councilmember Breckus, did you have anything to make as announcements about city boards, commissions, or activities that you wish to share with us at this time?
I will. I had my quarterly meeting with the waste management team last week and expressed concern that I had, my constituents I've been talking to have, and I think members of this body about the closure of Marshall Row Waste Transfer Station, and, you know, got into how they operate, what mechanisms, you know, they thought they could take to make it safe for operations, and then it was announced two days ago that it is going to, it is open effective today, and I'm very happy about that, because I was getting concerned that it might promote dumping. But I understand Lockwood was open, and I don't know if Lockwood's still going to honor the free dump date, dump, you know, the free dump certificate or bill, but, but the transfer station is open, and people can use their free waste tickets right now. So that's good.
Councilmember Breckus, thank you for that. I sort of was echoing your same thoughts, because you had raised a good idea about sort of taking pictures of dumpings and then backcharging waste management for it, and I think that they certainly didn't want us to be in that position, and I know that they were working hard on this issue. Thank you for your advocacy there. Councilmember Dewar, do you have any announcements at this time? Okay, Councilmember Delgado, do you have any announcements at this time?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Weber, did you have a chance to get back on yet?
He is back, yes.
Okay, you're back on. Councilmember Weber?
I, I, I am back on, and I just wanted to make a comment about a program that our Councilwoman Dewar did, started with the volunteers and her program, and she does a much better job at sharing that program that got started under her and her liaisons getting it together. And so I just want to say, it's awesome, and I hope that we all look towards using that for our volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Weber. Councilmember Jordan?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I have nothing to add. Madam Mayor, is there anything you would like to add at this time?
No, I'm good.
Thank you. And Councilmember Dewar, I didn't skip you, but I didn't know if you were on the line, so I'm coming back to you. Were you able to hear? Councilmember Weber was sort of sending you a shout out and congratulations for your feeding programs that you and Mr. were working on.
Brad Pitts, yes. And what I, thank you very much, Councilwoman Weber, and I just wanted to just put a footnote on that. We piloted it for working with the Reno Housing Authority to get senior staff. It's basically on autopilot, people sign up, I'm not involved. It's really now, these are the Reno Housing Authority volunteers, but they're just managed through this program that Mr. Fitch, I have to give him all the credit, found and really learned, and then apparently reached out to Tess Opperman, and she used to support the stuff of us and get volunteers there. And so since it seems useful, it's definitely not mine anymore. I mean, this is a City of Reno thing, where I think if we need volunteers, whether it's something like a tree planting, or something like a cleanup project out in a ward, any council member could establish a new task and ask for volunteers, they could have their liaison manage that. Anybody in the city staff that wanted volunteers for a different type of project can use it. So it's really gone from a pilot phase to available for the city. And just as a reminder, so you can set up a new task, and you can have your own liaison manage that. I think we'll just keep Brad on there for continuity in case there are issues. But anyway, thank you, Councilwoman Weber, and I think it's just a new resource for all of us. So thanks.
Okay, thank you for your commitment at this time. I appreciate all the work that each of you are doing. I think that's the end of H11. And now that we have Councilmember Weber back on the phone, I want to come back to Councilmember Weber. As I understood it, Councilmember Weber, you had an item which you would like to recall from the earlier consent agenda item. If you could just speak to that, and then we'll take it from there.
Thank you, and I just wanted to bring back item B10. I just think it's important to get it on the record, and I don't know if Ms. Lochner is still there, but I wanted to see if you could reopen that.
Unfortunately, she's not still here. So you've moved to reopen the item. To do so, we would need a second. Is there a second?
I'm all second.
Okay, I have a motion to reopen the item D10, or B10, and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilmember Weber, I think Ms. Lochner is not here to answer your questions, but I know that Mr. Stockham was involved in some of the issues surrounding the Building Enterprise Fund, and at least speaking with members of building community, who I think you've spoken with and may have raised a concern. I saw Mr. Kropodak and Ms. DiLoreto's comments were lodged in the record as commentators, and then I had the chance to speak to Mr. Tatro about this issue a couple of nights ago. Is there something else you want to share with the group?
Well, I think it needs to be on the public record what they said, so that people that are watching or hearing can just know that I was going to ask about some particular items, but specifically about the Building Enterprise Fund, the true-up there. And that, that was my question, if it could be on the record. Their concern was, is they asked for an accounting. I guess some people had asked for an accounting of how we got to that recommendation to do the true-up, and I, apparently, it wasn't, like, voted on by DFA, and I, I'm glad that Ms. Dewar is there, because she can comment on that. But typically, wouldn't DFA be recommending, would the group not be recommending that there would be an accounting, or some kind of a vote, or that sort of thing? So I just wanted to ask that question.
Your point is well taken, Councilmember Weber. Of course, their record, their comments have been made on the record, because they were included in the public comment for this meeting, as though they would have been here in person. If Ms. DiLoreto had come here in chambers, and we were under different circumstances and made her statements, those same statements have been included in our record. I think Ms. Lochner this morning, and again, it was a long time ago, has already explained the general accounting principles that went behind how this came to be, and that's also part of the record. Certainly, as we strive for transparency in all things, our departments are working to provide backdrop and support for all those things, and I think have made that clear to the members of the BFAK who have come out. As to whether or not the BFAK has to vote on something, the answer in my mind is no. They are an advisory board, and just having a general accounting principle be trued up isn't required their support or vote. They don't have that power. So those are my thoughts on it. I appreciate your bringing it forward, because I do think it's important to the members of that community to understand it and understand the contours of it. And again, I'm not speaking for Ms. Lochner, because she's not here, but I'm just sharing my thoughts about our conversation this morning. I don't know that there's anyone else here in the room who's prepared to answer any additional questions, but hopefully I've answered at least what I understood the question to be.
Well, thank you very much. I, I thought it would be a good idea to at least have me say something on the record about that. So thank you so much.
Outstanding. Thank you so much for your oversight and your watchfulness on that item. Okay, I don't.
We will need a motion to.
Okay, so I need to, Councilmember Weber, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, yes, I will. I, I just wanted to open it up, so I moved to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Weber, and can I get a second now, please?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Dewar. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we're on item H2. This is Presentation and Direction to Staff Regarding the Initiation of an Ordinance Change.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Okay. I'm not sure whether there will be discussion or questions from council, so, and I'm not sure who in our staff is here to present on this, if they should have them. Mr. Stockman, if you would come forward, are there, does anyone require a presentation, or are there just questions from council at this point? It doesn't look like we have questions or presentation requested. Can I get a motion, Councilmember Jordan?
I have a question. I have a question.
Okay, hold on a second, Councilmember Breckus. Councilmember Jordan has made a motion. Can I get a second? We have a motion by Councilmember Jordan, and a second by Councilmember Weber, and now it sounds like we have questions for the motion maker. So further discussion at this time, Councilmember Breckus, I think you.
Yeah, this is some work to our zoning code, and we're in the process of redoing our zoning ordinance, and so it's a load on to some work we've already gone on. It's a, it's hopping over a lot of other work and priorities, including the ordinance moratorium we just continued, because that's in the queue. I've been standing by patiently, while my constituents are very concerned about depleting housing stock that's affordable for short-term rentals, and we're not doing that ordinance. So now we're jumping ahead, much in the way that we did to the shade ordinance amendment last fall, to a long-term, standing, thoughtful, publicly-created ordinance, and I'm just not ready to get the ball rolling on that without some sort of discussion on what is the objective and why this is coming here today.
Okay, any other council members have any questions or comments?
Oh, I have another question. I have another question.
Okay, well, you've got three minutes, so you didn't quite use any of it, so I'm coming back to you, and we'll pause there for a second. Councilmember Breckus?
Yeah, I mean, I guess because no one answered my first question, which is, why are we doing this? Why are we changing the zoning ordinance? You know, is a longstanding one is, why? Who wants this? What's the purpose? What's the process going to be? And here's what I think I know. I think the university wants us to stand pivot off of a long-term urban design ordinance that we've had in place, just like the shade ordinance, which has caused a whole lot of grief up in the north part of downtown, south part of downtown. And I'm a little uncomfortable of that. I think a lot of asks have made, been made to the university to come to the table in partnership with us, even recently, in terms of helping us on this emergency, and they haven't done it. But the council continues to some backdoor channels respond to their requests, abandonments, support of RTC projects and funds, you know, responding when a dorm blows up. And I, last time the university came forward directly and asked for something, I brought forward to the rest of the council some proposals on grant agreements between cities and universities and their host cities, and I'm not prepared to do these one-off deals that the university leadership that's in place at this time thinks they want or need. I'm, I'm looking forward, if we're going to change public policy for the university, that we have a broader discussion about what this is for, why we're doing this. So I'm very troubled by this request in several regards, but I think it's just been kind of brought through here. So those are my questions. If they go unanswered, you know, they're, they're unanswered questions, that'll come back later, just like the shade ordinance, I'm sure.
Okay, does any other council member have any questions?
Yes, Councilmember Dewar.
Yeah, the floor is yours, Councilmember Dewar.
Okay. I have not had time to understand what this is about. I, I could very well possibly be for it, and. I, I could very well possibly be for it, and, or I could be neutral on it. But what I wanted to do, I had a question for our manager. I know we established a process for bringing forward new ordinances, which has been working really well. And usually it involves a staff, a staff member making a presentation about what the issue is. And I don't recall that, I may have missed that. And so I just wanted to ask, do we, are we following that process? If not, could we hold this off until we do have, yes, oh, we have had it?
This, this is what that is?
Oh, this is this. This is not an ordinance.
To set and place the process.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Could we just have an explanation from staff perhaps, just what this is? I mean, I'm fine to move forward with it, I just, I was unclear. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stockham, we'd invite you to the dais, to the lectern.
Arlo Stockham, Community Development Director. What this text amendment would do, well, backing up, we have a fairly unusual section of code here that requires the creation of a special committee to provide an advisory recommendation related to skyways. To my knowledge, we don't have this similar requirement for any other type of development in the city. This is logistically difficult in general, but in particular at this time, the associations and groups that are called on to make the appointments to this advisory committee, they're not meeting right now. They're all on stay-at-home orders as well. There's currently an application for a special use permit in, from the university for the, the ADA walkway over Ninth Street from the proposed parking garage. If, I guess our recommendations are twofold. Our first recommendation is that we eliminate this requirement for a committee. We already have an established process for review of skyways. They require approval by the Planning Commission and the City Council. If the council's not comfortable doing that, we would recommend a text amendment so you could appoint the committee. The consequence of that second option would be a delay in construction for the university. If we're not having the requirement for a advisory design committee in addition to our normal process, they can commence construction this summer as planned. They've already been delayed fairly considerably due to our meeting cancellations. So just in closing, this is, this is a one-off ordinance. It hasn't been used in decades, and it seems a little unusual that we would do this for skyways, but not for anything else. And in terms of staff...
I'd like to follow up with a question.
In terms of the staff load, this would actually, this amendment would significantly reduce our staff workload. Assembling and getting this committee together would be a significant expenditure of resources.
Okay. I have a question to clarify.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to understand, I'm just unclear even with the presentation. So do we currently have a design review committee existing with people appointed to it?
No, we do not.
So we have a requirement that something be reviewed by a design committee, but we don't have the design committee appointed? Is that it?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. So you're suggesting either remove the requirement for a design committee, or go ahead and appoint one?
Yes, the, the recommendation is remove the requirement. The backup is do a text amendment so council could create this committee in a more efficient way.
And do you mean that we would just, do you know how many people are supposed to be on the committee, as it stands today?
If I can speak to fill in a few of the blanks here, this is city clerk. Part of the challenge, as it is with this existing board, is that it has, we have no record of it meeting. There are areas in the code that are identified that are very vague, that don't allow us to bring forward actual applicants to you in the way in which the code is currently written. There are no bylaws, there are no guidelines, there's no determination of term as to whom should sit on this board, as to whom should be appointed, and who should be appointing. It is vague in nature and which does not allow us to actually bring forward something to you.
May I, may I come in here?
Yeah, just last question.
Hold on a second, Councilmember Dewar, are you finished with your questions?
No, I had one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
I thought we had, I thought we had an ordinance that applied to skyways and that actually prohibited them, and maybe it only applies in downtown, and maybe it doesn't apply elsewhere. Could I just get clarification on that?
Yes, we do have a very detailed skyway ordinance that would remain in effect regardless of the action on this. There are a number of prohibited locations, but not the entire city. The location for the UNR Skyway is not prohibited.
And then lastly, I'm sorry, if we did not have a committee existent, which we don't, and if we didn't want to take the time to appoint them, who would review the skyway design? Would it be staff?
No.
Would there be any public process?
Yes, there will. It's actually an additional public process. The special use permit requires review by the Planning Commission and the City Council.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Breckus, did you have a follow-up question? I'll come back to you for your second period if you are desiring to do that now.
Yeah, you know, look, I want to be very upfront. I think it is a little unfortunate that the recommendation came forward in this way without giving the background of what the existing regulations are, maybe a little bit of the history, and so on. I think, I see it very close to the shadow ordinance, where, you know, I supported that ordinance. It came forward as staff and made some sense and logic, and then a whole lot of people with a lot more history than I educated me on it. And I think that the council should be very mindful that this extraordinary process of a committee exists for a reason. There was a time, point in time where these skyways were a topic of incredible community conversation, and the community came to a, you know, a remedy that they wanted in place for the future. And now the first time it comes into play, this council is like, oh, let's go away with it, let's forget it. I mean, there are implications as you get further away in thinking about these skywalks. And I think that we should just not blow it off. And I think it'd be very sad if the council does this and, and really, you know, look at the larger picture of what the university is doing. It's something I've been advocating for a long time, but I, I think this is very sad and poor, poor planning and urban design considerations if we just disregard and change the ordinance. I think we do need to take our time and look at this skywalk. There's implications to our park, possibly. Is it going to span over our park and our shadowing and our street, over our, you know, I, I think that we need to have this whole entirely fleshed out. And I want to make another point, is there's a lot of concern out there in the, in the world, in the public commentary, about people taking advantage of the COVID to gain certain things. And if, if COVID is going to be a problem for a whole lot of people, but not a problem for the university in this, and having a discussion with the community, that could be a very unfortunate thing for our leadership. Thank you.
And, Mr. Vice Mayor, I have one more comment, too.
Councilmember Dewar, you are up.
Yeah. Thank you. I, I would have, I, I'm listening to my colleagues both, you know, apparently this has been put forward per the form by Councilwoman Jordan. I think she's trying to solve a problem, which I respect. I've also heard the concerns from Councilwoman Breckus. My concern is very consistent, is making sure there's public input on any change. I, I could support this if I felt that there was going to actually be time for public discussion of this, because it could be controversial. So what I'm concerned about is I would not want to have this on this meeting and then come back with a proposal at the next meeting without an opportunity to have public comment. So if we do move forward with this, what I would suggest is that the staff hold at least one, possibly more Zoom meetings where the public would be allowed to participate and register their input before it came back to council. That could be, you know, within the next month. It could be over a two-month period, I don't really know. They could wait till the pandemic is lifted and we're allowed to meet again. But that's my main concern. I, I want to hear what the public has to say, and I, I want to make sure it happens and that we have time to have that input before making a decision on words on a page. So those are some of my thoughts.
Okay, any other council members wish to weigh in?
Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Jordan?
Thank, thank you very much. I, although I've already made a motion on it, this is a pedestrian walkway so that students and those visiting the university can safely traverse an area that has a significant slope. This doesn't really fit in the traditional skyway box, but I understand it through our code, it, it does, and, and why we need to take this action. If the council will remember, this was brought to the council and was shown by the university at a previous meeting. And I think there will be ample time for public participation at both the Planning Commission and at the City Council. So I, I'm not in favor of adding another layer into this. I think we've got adequate review by the public. Nothing has been done in any non-transparent way. And if meeting with my constituents is some sort of backdoor deal, then it's, you know, I think that's, it's our obligation to meet with our constituents on these items, and I've done that. So I'm, I'm comfortable with moving forward with the outline that staff has recommended.
Right, and this is Councilmember Dewar. I don't think you were speaking to me, Councilwoman Jordan, just on any ordinance, we always have public process. So it's not about the specific walkway. I just want to make sure, like on any ordinance, that there's an opportunity for the public to comment on the ordinance change. So, and I'm not adding any more layers, I think staff would do that anyway. I'm just telling them it might be a little challenging in our time of pandemic, but I think they can do it. Thank you.
Okay, I think we have had a robust conversation. We currently have a motion by Councilmember Jordan, which has been seconded by Councilmember Weber. I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, please signify by saying no.
No, I oppose the change to this ordinance.
Okay, the motion carries six to one.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, our last item is J, which is general public comment not pertaining to an agenda item. In efforts of transparency, the clerk's office has been monitoring any public comments that have come in through the multiple facets that we've offered the public by way of voicemail, email, as well as an online public comment form. Anything that was received after the requested cutoff time of 4:00 p.m. yesterday has been entered into the record. It will be noted that this was sent to council for them to be able to review and is included in the record. We did receive six additional public comments from 4:00 p.m. yesterday through this current time. Again, those have all been added to the record and have been sent to council. At that time, we have no further public comment, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, I, before we adjourn, I'd like to just take a moment and have a moment of silence. I understand while we've been in the meeting, we experienced our seventh COVID-related death in Washoe County. So if we could all please just take a moment of silence for those folks and continue to lift up this community that we all love so much. Okay, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn, please.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jordan, a second by Councilmember Delgado. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We're adjourned.